Welcome to the Tempe City Council's special meeting on April 12, 2019, here in Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For those that are able, could you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by a pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. At the April 4, 2019 work-study session, the city council agreed to hold a hearing tonight to vote on the removal of Kobe Granville from the Tempe City Council. Removal of a council member from the office requires an affirmative vote of five of seven members pursuant to the Tempe City Charter, Section 2.06D. Additionally, the council must find that unlawful conduct involving more perpetued fraud or corruption is present in order to remove a council member. At tonight's special meeting, the city council meeting, the city council will consider evidence that has been presented to the city council, any evidence presented tonight, and responses to the evidence by council member Granville. Evidence has been previously presented to the city council by legal counsel Sarah Barnes and is again included in tonight's council meeting materials. While the city council values the opinion of our residents and the public concerning this matter, opinion is not evidence and will not be considered as evidence for purpose of this hearing. The first item on our agenda is a call to the audience, item number two for tonight's agenda. Audience members do have up to three minutes to address the city council. If you would like to speak on this matter, please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found in the back of the council chambers, and please hand it to our city clerk, and then I will call your name and it's your turn to speak. I have some cards, I'm going to list them as the order I received them. First one is Liam Huggins. As you come forward, please state your name and place a residence for the record.
My name is Liam Huggins. I'm a resident of Tempe, Arizona. I am also a former member of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee, and I'm a McClintock High graduate and current ASU student. Back in November 2017, Kobe Granville went to a MIAC meeting. This was happening during the first accusation that came out of Kobe Granville, and this was only a month before his firing. MIAC at the time had multiple Tempe Preparatory Academy members on the council, all of them who were women, many of them being in their junior and senior years. At the time, I didn't know of Kobe's actions. But for the women of TPA, I'm sure they were well aware of Kobe's reputation as a predator. It wasn't until a year later that while talking to City of Tempe employees, that I realized Kobe had made his visits to the meeting. This remembrance of Kobe's presence had a collective feeling of disgust and an ease between me and the City of Tempe members, or City of Tempe employees. It is clear now to everybody, and not just Kobe's preferred demographic of underage women, but to the city employees and the members of this community that Kobe is not to be trusted. And this is going to lead to serious problems if Kobe Granville is not removed from the council. Firstly, I know that personally and many other people will use all the power within them to make sure that Kobe Granville can no longer go to events where he can prey upon women who have been, who in the demographic that he has abused before. I know I will use all the power I had to make sure that MIAC will not accept Kobe Granville, and I'm sure many other organizations would do that as well. But the problem with that is, is that unjustly leaves out the rest of the city council from participating in group and community events. Because as many of us know, you cannot just disallow one council member from going to a meeting. And unfortunately, we would have to not allow the entire council board to go to any meetings. And that just isn't fair to the rest of the council. And it is separating ties from different important community events to this city council. Another major setback, if Kobe Granville is left on this council, is the effect that it will have towards women within this community. It will completely set back their progress as leaders, as the future politicians, as the future kind of progress makers in this community. I don't know a single individual, I don't know a single family member who would have it in good conscience to let their daughters go to these events, knowing that Kobe Granville could potentially manipulate them and hurt them in the future. So if the city council wants to make a change, they want to strengthen their ties to the community, and they want progress for women in this community, then the only option is to kick Kobe Granville off this council. There is no other way. Kobe Granville has made it clear that he is not changing his ways, and it is too clear that he's a predator among the women of Tempe. Thank you.
Please no clapping. Next is Jason Noor.
Hi, I'm Jason Noor. Good evening, Mayor Mark Mitchell, council members. I'm here to speak, obviously, about the problems in our community. I've lived here for my entire life. I've been born and raised right here in Tempe, Arizona. And I've always had a deep amount of respect for the city council, the city council members, for the actions that you guys do. And continuing to have Kobe Granville on this council is a disgrace. If you look at the accusations, if you look at the accusations and even the talk that's coming out of any place that he's worked, it's clear that he's a sexual predator. There is a clear continuing record of his actions, no matter where he's at. And so, taking these together, it's a disgrace to our community to continue to have council member Kobe Granville on the council. Your vote tonight is key to restoring some amount of respect to this council, is key to continuing Tempe as a bastion of, I think, progressive politicians, of progressive people. And so, I mean, if you, I plead with you, vote to remove him, vote to get rid of, and say to this community that we do not accept sexual predators, that we do not accept rapists on this council. Thank you.
Please no clapping. Next is Mario Martinez. And then, following Mr. Martinez is David Huff. So David Huff, if you could stand on deck, if you will. He's a baseball analogy.
Hello, my name is Mario Martinez, and I live in Tempe. With the exception of one member, I would like to thank the entire city council and outside council, Ms. Sarah Barnes, for providing the Tempe voters with the legal information needed on this matter. The evidence shows that Kobe Granville is a contemptible, unrepentant rapist who should be expelled by this council this evening. The Proposition 418 Code of Conduct reform was passed by the voters last fall. It was not retroactive by design, but Proposition 418 was also never intended to act as a city council rapist amnesty program when confronted by evidence that a city council member raped a minor after it was passed. With Kobe, this is exactly what happened. Some big government spenders here tonight will support the idea of giving a city council paycheck to someone like Kobe who raped a minor. I disagree. The Tempe girl who was violated by Kobe stated that the reason she did not press criminal charges is she was afraid of being revictimized by Kobe's older sister, Ms. Kari Jill Granville-Minton, and her social media allies. At the last ethics meeting, this is exactly what happened. One of Ms. Granville-Minton's allies publicly stated that all three girls that Kobe violated were a group of lesbians that had sex with each other. This is beyond disgusting. Then Kobe's fiance spoke up and accused these victims of spreading lies. In fact, Kobe's fiance was the one who was publicly spreading lies. Kobe's fiance provided very vivid, detailed explanation for what Kobe supposedly did and what he supposedly did not do. Yet Kobe repeatedly told the outside council that he remembered none of this. The fact that the memory of Kobe's fiance was infinitely better than Kobe is a blatant factual contradiction that does not pass the smell test. Kobe is a despicable liar. As we have seen from the empirical evidence presented, Tempe Prep, the Phoenix Police, the outside council, and the Arizona Bar Association did not believe Kobe. Another gentleman stated that the council is not the judge, jury, and executioner. This is true. This is not a criminal proceeding. Kobe is not going to be swinging from a tree at the end of a hangman's noose when this meeting is complete. That is absurd. In order to restore the integrity of this city council and the city of Tempe, this unrepentant rapist named Kobe Granville should be expelled by the council and replaced by someone who is not a rapist. Thank you.
On deck, David, is Jose. Munguia.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is David Huff. I was here last week. I'm a student sitting at ASU in Tempe. Last week when I was here, I talked about my personal anecdotal story. If my sister had grown up in Tempe, that she could have been a potential victim. And so I'm going to talk about another personal story that I've heard of while attending ASU and being a student leader. And now that I haven't worked with student government, I do work a lot with their members on student issues. This issue of sexual assault has been ongoing in our community at ASU for years. As an ASU student leader, I've literally been told by other student leaders that work within student government that the norm for student government women is to keep away from council member Granville due to unwanted advances. This is disgusting, and it deeply damages the ASU community. No person, especially young people and minors, should have to be made to feel that they are physically vited, especially here within their community. These students who are going through student government, who are, as we as Tempe are trying to foster the new student leaders and leaders of our community, should be made that they're felt to lead in a community and develop as young students here. I mean, ASU is one of the hallmarks of Tempe, of an innovative university with bright young students. And I believe that we should try and keep that environment as positive and accepting as possible moving forward into the future. The ASU Student Government Tempe voted recently, this month, an 11-0 vote in the Senate to support removing Kobe Granville in order to make other student government and as well as all ASU students and residents to feel safe here on campus. All of you on the council here are as leaders, just as much as the student government students are here at ASU, to make decisions on behalf of our community. You guys all here have a moral obligation to make a difference and to progress our city moving forward, to make our city to be made safe, and that no one should feel that they should be physically violated in our community. And so, I really want all of you to think clearly of the moral decision you're able to make here tonight to progress our city forward and to make sure that everyone feels safe. So I hope you make the right decision in removing Kobe from this council, because everyone here has, it's not a privilege to serve our community, it's not a right. We all put you here, and you guys should all to make sure that you work for us and make sure that our city is safe. Thank you.
Next, Jose. And then following Jose, Cameron Adams, you're on deck.
Hello, I'm Jose Munguia, and I'm currently a student here at ASU in Tempe. When I first heard about Kobe Granville, it immediately brought back memories of friends of mine who were back home. They went to a high school, and their principal sexually assaulted them. And it just wasn't one student, two students, it was actually multiple women at the high school. They would tell me stories of how they felt in seeing their principal every day in the halls, knowing that they had to see their sexual predator every single day, and know that he has power, and that he has the power to do something to them that they don't want to do at all. So ever since I've heard that, I've always advocated for survivors and sexual assault victims, because I feel that whoever is a sexual predator should not have power. And to you, the council and the mayor, I ask that you vote to remove Kobe Granville, because no one who is a sexual predator should have power at all. That is just dangerous to our entire community. So I ask you, please, for the removal, to show our community that we stand with our survivors. Thank you.
On deck is Tim Palmer.
Good evening, Mayor and, sorry, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Cameron Adams. I am a lifelong resident of Tempe, as well as a student at ASU. I, like many others here today, have not spoken in a meeting like this before, which I think points to the fact that this is an extremely unsettling and disgusting situation, and also a very important issue to so many here today. Growing up in Tempe and attending Tempe Public Schools for my entire life, as well as knowing many individuals who both attended Tempe Preparatory Academy and that had Mr. Granville as a teacher, this is an issue that has struck me at my core. I think that the council members on this Tempe City Council should set an example for their community, and I believe that the continued presence of a sexual predator on the council directly contradicts that. With that being said, I believe that the only option, and I really hope that the council will vote to remove Mr. Granville today. Thank you.
Please, no clapping, please. Next, on deck is Catherine Novotny. Tim Palmer, you're up, but Catherine's on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Tim Palmer. I'm a homeowner on West Fairmont Drive. To ease your concerns, I'm not here to complain about traffic safety or traffic movement. Tonight, I want to briefly address the matter at hand, the state of affairs of our council members. Being a longtime Tempe resident, I take great pride at what Tempe has become over the last 55 years. The vision and evolution of Tempe has been amazing. The stewardship and representation of Tempe is a serious responsibility. Much of the current vision, design, and development success of Tempe are the results, let me take this off, are the results of the hard work of you that you've given on your time on the council. Tempe is the crown jewel of Arizona, and our positive national recognition is at your best work. Thank you. Stewardship is both the quality of life design and the services that ensure our safety. Council members, in my opinion, are both policymakers and salesmanship of our branding and marketing leading to our success. So I do recognize your efforts on our behalf, knowing that we are on a solid foundation and direction. With that said, the safety of Tempe residents must come first. And secondly, that of the representation of Tempe must be held high. Every council member must be of stellar ethics and steadfast, hard work. It's clear to many that council member Granville is neither mindful of the safety of our residents nor the positive marketing image of Tempe. With all the release of information on council member Granville, with all the release of charges and testimony on council member Granville, it's clear to many that the preponderance of evidence is likely real and of a serious nature. Tonight, your vote should be unanimous for the removal of council member Granville. Be mindful of the Granville victims and the marketing reputation of Tempe. Thank you.
Please, no clapping. And then on deck is Mariana Pina.
Hello, council members. My name is Catherine Novotny, and I'm a resident in Tempe, Arizona, and I am a student at Arizona State University. When I was a student back in high school in Colorado, a security guard pleaded guilty for sexual exploitation of child and sex assault charges for taking advantage of girls at my school. That was not the first time during my schooling that we had heard of teachers and authority figures taking advantage of students. It happens all around us. It is a problem that is not isolated. It is a problem of systemic abuse, one that Kobe Granville has been a part of. Harming the innocent and vulnerable goes against what a city council member's job is. Sexual assault, harassment, anything of the sort has no place in our government and in our lives. I don't want others going through what these young women have to endure. I do not want an abuser representing me, neither do many others. The city council has an obligation to protect their women and their youth. The facts in this case are clear to everyone. Please do the right thing in removing Kobe Granville. We cannot let a sexual assaulter on this council. Thank you.
Mariana. And then on deck is Melissa Gonzalez.
Hello, council. My name is Mariana, and I'm a resident of Tempe. I'm a daughter. I'm a sister. I'm a queer woman. I'm a student, and I am also a survivor of sexual assault. I'm also a student leader, and I have been given the privilege of leadership to represent and lead my peers, many of whom are behind me today. It is a privilege to have a voice. It is a privilege to be able to talk about this issue. You have a privilege today to be able to have a voice on this issue for the voiceless. You all represent Tempe. And by having a sexual predator on your council, are you saying that Tempe is a city of sexual predators? I know you all know that is not true. Remember who put you in those seats. It is our daughters. It is our sisters. It is our queer family. It is our sexual assault survivors who put each of you in those seats today. Tempe deserves better than Kobe Granville. We deserve better than having a sexual assaulter in that seat right there. I implore the council to do what is right. I implore the council to protect their residents. I implore the council to unanimously vote to remove Kobe Granville from his seat. Thank you.
Please no clapping. On deck is Joshua Coben.
My name is Melissa Gonzalez, and I live in Tempe. I am here as a resident of Tempe and also as a teacher. I'm here to share my concerns, specifically the comments made by Mr. Granville in his interview with attorney Sarah Barnes. I find the following comments to be concerning and inappropriate. First, Ms. Barnes states, "Okay, did you tell her that she needed to not share that she was dating you with other people?" Mr. Granville says, "Yes." Ms. Barnes, "And why is that?" Mr. Granville, "Same reason you can't be a communist in the 1950s, same reason you can't be gay in the 1980s. My life exists the way it exists now because I was dating her." Later in the interview, he says, "So I don't want to keep going back to this example, but in my mind, it's akin to if a teacher were found out to have HIV in the 80s or 90s." Later in his interview, he discusses relationships with former students on social media. Ms. Barnes, "Did you ever request to follow a student at TPA after you had been terminated?" Mr. Granville, "Yes." Ms. Barnes, "And who was that?" Mr. Granville, "There will be more than one." Another comment by Mr. Granville later in the interview. Ms. Barnes, "But when you say lifestyle choices, or when she said that, what is she talking about? And what do you think she's talking about?" Mr. Granville, "She, she's gay, which also makes the allegations really kind of comical, like super gay, like never kissed a boy gay, like gay from the time she was like born." Later in the interview, Ms. Barnes, "Okay, did you talk with her about women having sex with men when they're gay?" Mr. Granville, "I don't know. I don't know why I would. I don't know why a gay woman would have sex with a dude, but..." Also in the interview, Ms. Barnes, "You're on your back, she's laying next to you with her head on your chest." Mr. Granville, "Yeah, that thing that like girls do." Ms. Barnes, inaudible. Mr. Granville, "Women do, whatever. You know what I mean." And lastly, Ms. Barnes, "So it's a witch hunt?" Mr. Granville, "I think it's tribalism. I mean, I think everyone means well. I think they just, you know, once you start picking on the fat kid in the playground, like that's the thing to do, and you certainly don't want to stick up for the fat kid, because then you're going to be the one picked on in the playground." As a teacher, I find many of his comments inappropriate and disrespectful. Mr. Granville is a representative of Tempe, and it is unacceptable. His patterns of relationships and friendships with his former students are extremely concerning. Members of city council, you have an opportunity to stand up for the residents of Tempe. Let victims know that you believe them. Use this as an opportunity to show progress, not take steps backward. As a resident of Tempe, I would hope that those representing our city would hold themselves to the highest standards. Please also remember that he is representing you as well. Thank you.
All right, Joshua. On deck is Devon Gonzalez.
Joshua? Oh, I'm Joshua, too.
What's that? Yeah, Joshua Coben. On deck is Devon Gonzalez.
Thank you. My name is Joshua Coben, and I work here in Tempe, Arizona. I rise in support of many of the other residents and students gathered here tonight. I would ask the council to follow procedures any other workplace would follow regarding credible sexual assault accusations. A senior manager at my own job was terminated last week for simply sending suggestive text messages to his female employees. I feel like the allegations against Mr. Granville are much more severe than his. We need to remember that this vote does not convict Mr. Granville of a crime. This is not a court of law. Neither was my senior manager at my job convicted of a crime. It just removes them from a position of power that they could abuse. Ask you, ask that you vote unanimously to remove Mr. Granville and appoint a council member we can actually be proud of and respect, or call for a special election so that we can let the voters choose. Thank you.
Devon. On deck is Alex Baker.
Good evening. I'm Darren Gonzalez. I am a resident of Tempe, Arizona. I am speaking tonight as a resident and as an educator about my concerns with council member Kobe Granville. There are major concerns that I believe should move council member Granville to resign from his position, allowing the best interests of himself and Tempe government to move forward. As an educator, it is gravely concerning me that Mr. Granville has had many incidents of inappropriate behavior leveled against him. After police investigation, it was found that the allegations could not be pursued further. However, it is important to note this. A teacher's reputation is earned. Whether as a disciplinarian, a tough grader, or as one who gives out too much homework, each teacher's reputation grows and becomes known through their actions. Mr. Granville's reputation, as reported by student groups at Tempe Prep and ASU, was earned. As a Tempe resident, Mr. Granville's memo in his response to the code of conduct violations shows considerable concern in his ability to represent the residents of Tempe. Mr. Granville stated in his life recap that he has been fired from his job, has $30,000 in debt, has extensive legal fees, and has faced ridicule along with vandalism of his property. Representing the residents of a city is a service, not a requirement. Mr. Granville's significant time, or needs significant time, to get his affairs in order. He should allow another representative to advocate for Tempe's needs so that he can get his affairs and life back in that order. Thank you for your time.
Alex. And then following Alex, on deck is Kaneen Pruder.
Dear members of the council, my name is Alex Baker, and I am a member of ASU Tempe Student Government. I spoke at the last working session and stand here again today to ask you to do what needs to be done for the good of our city. While our student government recently passed an unopposed resolution strongly demanding Councilman Granville's expulsion, I speak solely from my position as a concerned Tempe citizen. Council members, in college, there's the concept of an easy A class. It's a class where you don't have to put in too much effort, nor really think things over. It's a gimme class that serves to boost your grade point average and give you an extra couple of credit hours. But if you fail that class, that's a really solid indictment against your abilities. Council members, this is your easy A. Affordable housing, water rates, economic development, those are all complex issues. I'll give you that. However, this is quite straightforward. Do you stand with the majority of the council and side for basic human decency? Or do you stand with this child rapist? That's who Councilman Granville is, a child rapist. He has built a political machine of obfuscation, deflection, and lies that would make Justice Brett Kavanaugh jealous. And though the amplification of a few key voices on his side tonight may make it seem that the people of Tempe are evenly split on this decision, and that if one of you decides not to vote to expel, that you'll have ample political cover in these upcoming elections. Rest assured, council members, that is not the case. The youth vote is not something to be trifled with, especially in a town where we are 20% of the population. A couple of you are on this council because of student actions on your campaigns. Had it not been for throngs of students staying in line hours after polls closed at ASU, Arizona's congressional delegation may have looked different. To the members still on the fence, I want you to look out into this crowd and judge just how many more students are in this audience relative to the working session a week ago. How many more students dedicated their Friday night of all days to come to these proceedings? We'd rather be boosting the Mill Avenue Bar economy. We are the same age as the victims of the child rapist currently on the council. Some of us may even know these victims. Others know someone else who is a victim of sexual assault, something far too common on college campuses. There are a lot more of us who couldn't make it today. But they will remember the decision you make here today, and I promise you, they will vote. I promise you, they will organize others. I promise you that they will hold you accountable if you neglect to hold this child rapist accountable, and they will outwork every acolyte of denial that is on his side. It is up to you today if they'll vote for you or for your opponents. To any member on this council who votes to shelter this child rapist, we will see you next March.
Please no clapping. Kaneen, and then on deck is Casey Close.
Hi, my name is Kaneen Pruder. I live on East 14th Street. I've been a member of the Tempe community since 2006, and I cherish this community very deeply, and I care very much about how we're represented. I frankly never spoken about this topic in public before, so please bear with me if I wind up a little bit difficult. I was sexually assaulted when I was 17 years old, two weeks before my 18th birthday. It was what I thought was going to be an innocent date, but I wound up being drugged and raped by a member of the United States military and left in an alley with nothing but, my pants by my ankles and defend for myself. and left in an alley with nothing but my pants by my ankles and defend for myself. Like I mentioned before, I have never really talked about this publicly, but I feel the conversation around power dynamic is something that needs to be talked about very seriously. Those in positions of power hold a unique responsibility to treat all of their constituents with respect and not perversion. I echo what Mr. Huff said earlier because I too know many women at ASU's undergraduate student government in Tempe that have been warned to stay away from Mr. Granville because of his actions and how he treats younger women. I encourage you all to vote to remove Colby because the Tempe City Council is better and I know that this community is better and we all as constituents in this room deserve better from our representatives. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Casey, on deck is Tanner Van Piers.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Mitchell. My name is Casey Claus. I grew up here in Tempe, going to Corona and ASU. I've been nauseous all day thinking about this meeting, thinking about what I would say to you all that would, you know, be meaningful. That I could talk about how he abuses power, how he preys on the vulnerable instead of protecting them, how it's a liability for the city's growth and progress to have him on this council, how it feels to be a sexual assault and rape survivor who has had to watch a sexual predator represent our great city, or what it means to be a queer person represented by a clearly anti-LGBTQ member. But what it comes down to is this, is sexual assault an act of moral perpetu- an act of moral turpitude? I believe that it is. I think you believe that it is. I urge you to remove Councilmember Granville from the city council.
Tanner, on deck Ethan Burrow.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, fellow Tempe residents. My name is Tanner Van Piers. I'm a 23-year-old student and I've lived in Tempe for two years. I wanted to take the opportunity to address this council tonight for very specific reasons. One of your own stands accused credibly of some very serious alleged acts. I say credibly because I've read the statements and I've read the news articles. I've spoken with those closer to the situation than myself and because I am also a survivor of sexual violence. I know what it sounds like to tell your story, to recount your trauma and then be called a liar. And I know what it means to those who stand silent, not ready to come forward when credible accusations go unanswered and unaddressed. In times when direction is needed, we look to the representatives in our government, not only for leadership, but action. Given what has been made known about Councilman Granville, I would ask, what clearer call to action do we need? I hope this council will make the right choice for those who are victims of the councilman's alleged actions, the right choice for the councilman's own constituents, and the right choice for our city. Please vote to remove Councilman Granville.
On deck is Eric Ariano. No, Ariano. Ethan?
My name is Ethan Burrow, I'm a resident of Tempe. Members of the council, I stand before you today to ask you to do one of the easiest things that you should ever have to do during your tenure on this council. This is to expel a rapist from it. This should not be one of the more difficult decisions that is going to be made by this council. In fact, it is about as straightforward of a decision as a decision can get. Do we want Tempe to be known as a city that has a rapist on its city council? Is that something that we are comfortable with? Do we think that it is a good idea to allow a rapist to make decisions on behalf of the residents of this city? As one of those residents, I say hell no.
Please.
You have the chance to do the right thing and I sincerely hope that you will. As if you do not, whether your seat is up this coming in 2020 or in 2022, we will remember and we will defeat you. And if Mr. Granville is really vacuous enough to run again, we will defeat him too. I urge you to not force that path and to simply do the right thing right now, which is to remove the rapist Colby Granville from the city council. And to Mr. Granville, you are a disgrace, you are a shell of a human being and your lack of remorse is abhorrent. The fact that you did not resign says everything that needs to be known about you. The fact that you sit there in pompous silence says everything that needs to be known about you. Members of the council, do the right thing.
All right, Eric, you're up next. Justin Remley is on deck.
Good evening, my name is Eric Ariano and I am a resident of Tempe for four years, a student at Arizona State. And my comments tonight come from the perspective of being both a resident and an incoming high school computer science teacher over in Maryville. As an incoming educator, the most important responsibility laid upon me and laid upon our teachers is to keep our students safe. When parents send their children on that bus every morning, they are expecting that every single staff member at that school will above everything else focus on making sure that their most precious person in their life is safe. And as a former educator, Mr. Granville was assigned this responsibility and he failed to comply with it, which is why he was removed from his teaching position a few years ago. This expectation that we lay on educators, we also lay it on our elected officials. Mr. Granville has failed to uphold the public trust and make sure that our students and our community is safe. Now, speaking as a public citizen, I honestly think that Mr. Granville has some great ideas for the city. I like his ideas on biking and public transit. But for any football fans in the crowd, this is just like when the star quarterback of your favorite football team commits sexual assault. It doesn't matter how good of a football player they are. The fact that they have sexually assaulted someone means they need to be removed from that team. It doesn't matter how good Mr. Granville's ideas are for this city. The fact that he has assaulted multiple of our residents means that he must be removed from this council. For these reasons, I have lost my trust in Mr. Granville to represent this community and to focus on the safety and the protection of everyone in this community. So I urge everyone in this council and the mayor to please vote to remove Mr. Granville. Thank you.
Justin? On deck is Jessica Behrens.
Hello, my name is Justin Omeleus. I am a Tempe resident and a student at Arizona State. I first became involved politically in January 2018, right as these allegations began to come out. So, these allegations are actually my introduction to Arizona politics. And it was frankly jarring to have my first insight into politics be that one of the people representing me on the city council was a sexual predator. Especially given that around the same time, I found out my cousin, who I'm very close with, had been sexually assaulted. Since then, I found out multiple other friends of mine have experienced sexual assault while in college. And every time they tell me, I feel hopeless. I feel powerless. I feel like there's nothing I can do to stand up for them. But tonight, you all have the power. You all can take a stand for survivors of sexual assault by voting to remove a sexual predator from this council. So I encourage you to please vote to remove Colby Granville. Thank you so much.
Jessica? On deck Linda Amorosi.
Good evening, mayor and council. As you may recall, I spoke in support of Colby Granville at last week's work session. Although it saddens and angers me to say this, I no longer support Colby and I'll explain my reasoning. I first met with Colby about the Antonio Arce shooting and we've talked several times since. During one of our conversations last week, he disclosed that he had emails to and from the victims that he had not shared with the Phoenix Police Department or the independent investigator. Aside from this, he showed me the email that he received from one victim the day after she was assaulted at his house. Colby also pulled up one of the victim's Facebook pages on his laptop and showed me who she was. The reports are redacted to protect victim privacy and I was stunned at his eagerness to share this personal and confidential information. I stood up and spoke last week because I've been naively convinced of Colby's innocence. I texted him afterwards and questioned why he didn't say he was innocent immediately after the accusations were made. He called me to respond and his answer was something along the lines of, "I don't know, I wasn't thinking. If I had more time to think about what I was gonna say, I would have said that." I'm telling you right now though, Jessica, I didn't do this. Hearing those words was the first time that something didn't seem right to me because you don't need time to think about your defense if you're innocent. I read his interview with the investigator and was not surprised to hear that he'd sent an eighth grader a follow request. Before I'd ever met him, I got a follow request from him on Instagram. Days after we met the first time, he sent me a Facebook friend request from his personal page and followed me on Twitter. As surprised as I was at the time, this now just adds to my suspicion of guilt. There was no reason for him to follow me because I didn't even know him. Like Colby used to be, I'm a teacher and I think that it made it even harder to accept that he could assault women like that, especially former students at his school. I wanted to trust his claim of innocence because no teacher would ever hurt a student like that, right? I guess I was wrong. I go to school every day now thinking about my five-year-old students and what a dangerous world this is for them. I will never be able to understand what could drive someone to make a choice like that. It's sickening because all I want to do is protect my students, not see them hurt. It's my understanding that the council received an anonymous email sometime last week that alleged the woman had been planning this conspiracy for years. I know you have all seen the text messages between Colby and I and I hope that they cast additional doubt in the email's validity. You may want to compare the spelling in the email to his text to me, just saying. You'll also not only see that Colby admitted he kept documents from the investigators, but he was still actively attempting to hide them. If they prove his innocence like he says, he would have released them immediately following the accusations. The more I thought about this, the more I realized what a horrible position I'd been put in. I resent Colby for telling me about the emails and sharing the victim's information. I've struggled with this for over a week now and couldn't decide whether to let it go or say something. I know this is a 180-degree turn from where I stood last week, but I wouldn't be writing this if I didn't feel it was important. As much as I've thought about this, I don't feel I have a choice here. I'd hope that your votes to remove him are set, but if not, please consider what I've included above. Thank you.
All right, Linda Amorosi, and then on deck is John Kristoff.
Good evening, mayor, council, you all know me. First off, I have to say that I'm kind of perturbed about the way council meetings are run, to begin with. We've got people applauding here, they've been warned and warned. When do you stop warning and tell them to get out of here? That's what I don't, yeah, seriously, exactly. We got people eating popcorn in the front seat here like this is a show, taking videos. This is ridiculous, it's like a circus, okay? I just had to get that off my chest to begin with. Okay, I haven't seen all of the articles and so forth about Randy because as far as I'm concerned, no charges have been pressed. All these, I hear stories from people that are from Chandler and elsewhere that, oh, Randy is known, or Randy's the one that is behind this.
Ma'am, Linda, we have to stay focused on the agenda here.
Yes. Okay, people keep saying that Colby has a reputation for preying on women. If he's got that reputation, why do these women go out with him to begin with?
Ma'am?
Victim shaming.
Members of the audience, please, everyone's gonna have a chance to speak.
There's another, there's another voice out here. Yes, I am speaking. No charges have been pressed. I think that we need to wait until everything, all the investigations are done. When the charges come forth, we can go from there. Why are you trying to get him out of here when nothing has been proven yet? That's my time. I just, I'm not, I'm against the whole thing about removing Colby. Thank you.
Next is John, John Kristoff, and following John is Darren, following John is Darren Barrett.
Good evening.
Hey, John.
Good evening, mayor and council, my name is John Kristoff. I work at Arizona State University School of Earth and Space Exploration as a researcher and doctoral candidate. Some of you know me already. So, the context that I want to present here is about one year ago, ASU was grappling with accusations against one of its professors, Dr. Lawrence Krebs. At the time, I was serving on the School of Earth and Space Exploration Graduate Council, which is an organization within the School of Earth and Space Exploration which serves as a departmental student government. It is not affiliated with GPSA or the student government that you have heard representatives from talking about earlier. And we were on the front lines as accusations were coming forward from our students, our peers, our coworkers, not only at ASU, but at institutions across the country and indeed internationally about the conduct that Professor Kraus has engaged in. The allegations against Representative Granville, Congressman, Councilmember Granville, are almost identical, except perhaps in a few details. To describe this proceedings as a circus is to delegitimize the concerns of those who I have personally represented in my time as a graduate council member. And I recognize the same position is being held by you with regard to the city as opposed to with the department and the university. The course of action that we took with Kraus was immediately upon hearing that our student colleagues wanted his removal because they did not feel safe walking down the hallway where his office was to get to their own offices and their own laboratories. We immediately sent communications to our department chair, to Provost, to President Crowe, asking specifically for his removal, regardless of the fact that no charges had been filed, regardless of the fact that there had been no court proceedings, regardless of the fact that at that point, they were only still allegations. The procedure that the council in this case should go through should be the same. The outcome should be the same. For the simple reason that unless Mr. Granville is removed from this body, the power dynamics in play of having someone who has a previous record of assaulting, harassing, and abusing his constituents and his students will have the same deleterious effect on our entire city that had on ASU with Lawrence Krebs. Ultimately, Kraus was removed by ASU. He is no longer in the School of Earth and Space Exploration. He is in fact now barred from campus. This council does not have the power to bar Councilman Granville from the city of Tempe, but there should be some level of appropriate action similar. Thank you.
Darren Barrett? On deck is Joshua Van Cruz.
Well, first, my name is Darren, I'm from Tempe. I want to thank you, mayor, for allowing me to meet with you next Friday. Colby Granville, you were kicked off the ASU Regents for the same exact thing. You withheld evidence. Tempe PD needs to investigate this. Sylvia Moyer, do your job as a police chief and arrest this man at the end of the night. You've heard enough accusations, you've heard enough females, and you're gonna hear plenty more. Do your job and arrest this man. I want to see this man in cuffs at the end of the night. Thank you.
Next, Joshua Van Cruz? Or Josh? Or Jason? Sorry, Jason, I can't even read your handwriting.
My handwriting is bad.
Okay.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jason Van Cruz and I represent the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual Domestic Violence. The Coalition is a network of independent sexual and domestic violence programs in communities across the state, working with partners to prevent and eliminate sexual and domestic violence through dismantling oppression and promoting equity. As advocates who support survivors, every day we see these tactics time and again. Perpetrators choose victims that they know people will doubt and that they know that they can discredit before they choose to violate their boundaries. This is especially true of young people and people that belong to marginalized communities such as the LGBTQ community. Perpetrators groom their victims so they will often stay in their lives long after the victimization has occurred because they will be, have been convinced that it's their fault, not that of the perpetrator. Perpetrators use lies, manipulation, and alcohol as tools to violate the victim's boundaries. Meanwhile, survivors gain nothing from coming forward often with their stories. Only two out of every 100 reported rapes result in a felony conviction. As we've seen in this case, survivors are brutalized by people doubting their credibility, judging their choices, and not believing them. This is wrong. The level of false reports of sexual assault in this country is under 10%. The general lack of belief can prevent a survivor from participating in the criminal justice system or coming forward at all. The council has an investigator who believes- The council has an investigator who believes the allegations are true. The school fired Mr. Granville, and there's been numerous testimony before this body regarding other dynamics that happened with other students. It's time to believe survivors. The allegations presented to the council indicate actions not in keeping with the ethics of an elected official. These allegations require serious and immediate action of removing Mr. Granville from the city council. Thank you for your time.
All right. Joshua Close? Is it Joshua Klaus? Klaus. And then on deck is Audrey Reese.
I'm speaking to you as someone who's also a survivor of sexual assault and someone who doesn't feel safe in the city while there's a rapist on our city council. And I want to address some of the earlier comments that another female said about how they were... Why did they come to him if they didn't... if they knew that he was like someone to stay away from? They were 17 years old. They were in high school. They don't know better. They don't know to avoid people like Colby Granville. They were also members of LGBT community. They were confused, and they were scared. And he took advantage of that. He took advantage of their naivety and their youth to sexually assault them and rape them. And so the fact that they haven't pressed charges, that is the one of the most ridiculous things I've ever said. As someone who's survived it, you don't know... I mean, maybe you do, but there's a lot of trauma that goes through that. And you... Like, my experience is different than everyone else's, and we experience it in different ways, and you have no right to say that just because they didn't press charges that they weren't sexually assaulted or raped. Everyone deals with it in their own way, and you have no right to say that they should press charges if they don't want to press charges against the people. I'm asking the city council to look at all the evidence that's been presented, which I think is overwhelming in its nature, including the fact that your own investigator has concluded that there is more than likely a case against Colby Granville, that he is a rapist. And I'm asking you to remove him from the city council so that people can feel more safe. Thank you.
Please, residents, please. Please no clapping. Audrey Reese, and then Isabella Werner, you're up next.
Hello. My name's Audrey Reese. I'm 19 years old, and I'm a junior studying political science here at ASU. I've lived in Tempe for almost three years now, and I've grown to really love this city. I've grown to admire city council for all the work that they've done so far, so much so that I've even considered starting my career here. But now, I can't even fathom the idea of working with a council that has a rapist sitting right in front of me. Colby, I'm gonna call you Colby because I don't respect you, I'm not gonna say your name right. I just want to let you know that I think you're disgusting, and I think you're a coward, just like every other man that uses his power and his position to use and to manipulate young women. Councilmembers, I'm a rape survivor, and if you don't vote this man out of office tonight, you're telling me and every other survivor that our stories and our truths don't matter, and that men like Colby, rapists like Colby, will always stay in power. The decision is yours tonight, and it shouldn't be a hard one. Do what's right. Thank you.
Gwen Maltean is on deck.
Hi, I'm Isabella Werner. I went to Tempe Preparatory Academy from sixth grade to 12th grade, and Mr. Granville was one of my teachers. I had him as a eighth-grade history teacher and a humane letters teacher my junior year in high school, and also as a cross-country coach during junior high. And my relationship with him has always been professional. He has never done anything to me, or I don't know why he has perceived... gotten this reputation that he is this sexual predator. I understand that there are accusations against him, but there's a person here who's being convicted wrongly, and you should... Like, I understand, like, it's very difficult for me to come up here in front of all these people who are saying things that are against it. And I'm not trying to discredit anyone's story, but you need to understand that he is a human, and he is a person that he deserves to have something, you know? I'm not trying to say like, okay, honestly, like, I don't know. I didn't have anything really planned when I was coming up here, but honestly, I just wanted to tell you that he is a good person. He wrote me a letter of recommendation for a scholarship the day before it was due, and I got that scholarship, and I go to ASU now, and it's really helpful for me. So, I think that you should just like know that he is a good person, and he isn't someone that... I understand, like, everyone's upset, and like, everyone's emotionally charged, but he does have good qualities, and he isn't as terrible as everyone is saying he is. Thank you.
Gwen? On deck is Erin Guinea. Gwen Maltean?
Yes.
And then on deck is Erin Guinea.
My name is Gwen Maltean. I'm a resident of Tempe. I've been here since 96, since I came down here to come to ASU. And I've known Colby Granville for a few years now. He taught my daughter at Tempe Preparatory Academy. I also have the privilege of working right alongside him as an assistant cross-country coach. And so, I've gotten to know Colby over the years and everything, and feel like he is probably one of the most honest, hard-working people out there. I understand that there are a lot of accusations going on about that, and it's a... I'm not trying to discredit anybody's story either, and you know, there are a lot of... there's a lot of emotion in this room tonight. And Colby Granville is a good person. He does a lot of good things for the community, and he's taken a lot of action on things that help the environment, help the citizens. And, you know, he created an app so that things could get reported on a day-to-day basis and everything. So, it's really unfortunate that we find ourselves in this situation and have to discuss this kind of stuff in a Tempe City Council chamber room. But I'm here just to say that I am attested to his character and his credibility and his leadership. And I've never felt any uncomfortableness or anything like that either around him. I mean, he's always been very professional around him. When I've witnessed him around the other students and stuff, he's always been very professional around them. So, please take that into consideration tonight. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Gwen? I'm sorry. Erin? I grabbed the wrong card. And following Erin is going to be Andrea Guinea.
Hi, I'm Erin Guinea. I spoke at the Call to the Public last week. I am not a resident of Tempe. However, I have attended schools in Tempe, specifically Tempe Prep, from sixth grade through 12th grade. I graduated in 2016. I was never taught by Colby Granville, apart from maybe once or twice having him as a substitute for a class period of mine. But I think it's important to recognize that whether or not someone has had a personal interaction with Colby Granville that may have been an abuse of power, may have resulted in any of the accusations that have been leveled against him, it is still clear to see that he has been doing things that are inappropriate, he has been abusing power, and whether or not someone is a victim or survivor of his does not delegitimize his attitudes and actions towards others. There are a lot of things that have been said by people tonight, that were said by people last Wednesday, that say everything that I echo as well, so I'm not going to try to restate any of that. But I think a couple important things to talk about are that it can definitely be hard to try and reconcile your opinion and your knowledge of someone when they have been accused of something like this, especially when you have never seen any of the warning signs or any of the behavior exhibited that he has been accused of. I understand that. That is what people like Colby Granville do. They choose when to turn on their predatory behavior and when to use their abuse of power, specifically when they are trying to hurt someone and take advantage of them. So I understand it's difficult to try and vote him off when you are all colleagues of his, friends of his, other people in the audience that may be relatives of his, have a professional working relationship with him, or maybe are just constituents. I understand that. But we have to be listening to the people that have had these negative interactions with him, and you need to be seeing that as legitimate enough to remove him from the council. Removing him is not dependent on whether or not the three accusations are proven to be true in a court of law. Lots of reasons why survivors don't feel comfortable pursuing a manner like this in court is because of all the backlash they face, because less than 10% are actually convicted and result in those convictions of the people that have abused them. So, it makes sense why these accusations were not continued fully in a court of law. Speakers today and at the last session have showed how Colby Granville has shown predatory and inappropriate behavior by following students on social media, by asking recent graduates out on dates, and making students feel uncomfortable with comments in class and at school events. That alone should be enough to remove him from the council for the safety and the betterment of Tempe and Tempe residents. Thank you.
Andrea? Following Andrea is Igor Zankov? Igor?
Mayor Mitchell and council members, I'm Andrea Guinea. My children were students at Tempe Preparatory Academy while Mr. Granville was employed there. In response to statements made by his supporters, the fact that some constituents regard him as ineffective and responsive council member is not in dispute here. The fact that the inquiry against him didn't progress through the legal system is not the point of the council's vote this evening. The Tempe City Council Code of Conduct allows for investigation based on violations of ethical as well as legal standards. The issue is simply Mr. Granville's conduct. Is it unethical, and how does it reflect on the city of Tempe? As a former credential teacher, I speak from that experience as well as that of my previous leadership position at Tempe Prep. I heard about Mr. Granville directly from many parents and students during my time there as well as afterward. Professional boundaries exist in teacher-student relationships to protect both children and adults. Mr. Granville's repeated flaunting of these professional boundaries is without question inappropriate. For example, it is not appropriate for a teacher to follow or friend students on social media. It is not appropriate to invite a student to discuss her research paper over coffee or appear at a student's home to invite them on a bike ride. It would be disingenuous of Mr. Granville to claim he was unaware of the impropriety of these types of public, targeted, and persistent actions. Tempe Prep is a small school with graduating classes of about 50 students. It isn't in the least surprising, let alone suspicious, as was stated last week, that most students know each other. In an environment that small, most students, teachers, and staff know each other regardless of classroom assignments. At no point has Mr. Granville been accused of being stupid. On the contrary, the calculated way in which this man in his late 30s and early 40s walked a tightrope of legality by pursuing young women who weren't his students once they were freshly graduated and who were, in some cases, barely 18 years old, is clever. Perhaps slippery is the better term, but it is most certainly predatory. Mr. Granville's statements, both to the press and recorded in the inquiry report, show an arrogant refusal to acknowledge that he not only broke ethical boundaries, but also abused his position of trust and power as a teacher, lawyer, and council member. He appears to regard his status as a respected public figure as protection against scrutiny or consequence. Tempe Prep terminated him because his conduct brought disrepute to that Tempe institution, and his conduct does the same to the city of Tempe. Thank you.
Igor? And then following Igor is Lloyd Thomas.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Igor Zankov. I live in Chandler, and I graduated from Tempe Prep in 2015. I'm not going to repeat anything I said last week besides just to echo the fact that the Code of Conduct and Prop 418 make provisions for Colby Granville's removal. But in researching this further, realizing that Colby Granville was an attorney before he came to this council made a few things clear to me. It explained to me why there was so much concern over the age of his victims when he was going after them. Like, on a roof, he asks a victim, "What... How old are you?" He hears 17, is like, "Oh, there goes the goodnight kiss idea." And then another, the fact that he waited specifically for people's moments of graduation. With that experience in mind, it makes sense exactly why, as a previous speaker said, Colby Granville walked a legal tightrope. He wanted to have sex with nearly underage girls, and he also didn't want to land in jail. Lots of folks are saying that we are about to convict Colby Granville. No. If someone acts inappropriately at their job, we do not apply a criminal standard. We apply a more reasonable standard to keep people safe as quickly as possible, and that usually means removal if someone is a sexual predator. The other thing that I wanted to do was thank, I believe, Speaker Jessica Behrens for speaking up, because the email that she provided, the council communicator, is actually a bombshell. Let's review. First, she was told by Councilman Granville, before she knew anything, that the process against him was unjust. She was directed to what to say at the April 4 meeting, word by word. Then, when she started to ask questions, she explained that Councilman Granville showed an email in which a victim expressed remorse after having an inappropriate encounter. And then finally, it just shows the extent of the psychological manipulation of the victim. Someone could be hurt and in the weeks after still be blaming themselves. And finally, I just want to express how quickly someone does, quote, "a 180" on Colby Granville as soon as they hear the facts. With that in mind, I'd like to respond directly to Izzy Werner, who just spoke. Quote, "I don't know why he got this reputation. It's because there is credible documentation of three girls explaining in gory detail how they were raped or almost raped by a Tempe city council member." Izzy, I get that he wrote your recommendation, but that precludes you from seeing a person's true nature, and to anyone else who has known Colby Granville in a professional capacity and is coming to speak. Remember, people can be very different in private from what they are in public. Ladies and gentlemen, based on the dates of graduation, I know these victims. I was a senior when they were a sophomore. To think that just two years after I graduated, at least one of them was raped is absolutely stunning. Remove Colby Granville.
Next is Lloyd Thomas. And following Lloyd is Lori DeLuca.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lloyd Thomas. I'm a resident of Tempe residing in Geneva Street 200 block. I'm a member of the Transportation Commission appointed by Colby Granville. I am an attorney, inactive status, was a prosecutor for around 15 years, did a little defense work. For a prosecutor, the requirement is to seek justice, and a lot of times, you don't bring charges unless you believe that you have a reasonable likelihood of conviction. That doesn't mean that you don't think the person did it, that you don't believe the But there's also a question of whether... What the impact is on the judicial system if you go ahead and you lose. Prosecutors generally are winning somewhere between 70, 80% of the time. They don't take cases that they don't think they're going to win. I've known Colby. I've been to his house when he's had his meetings the same way that I've been to others' meetings, Joe Mambaro, Lauren Cooby, that had meetings at the library at the coffee. I don't think that this is an easy A, in that this is basically a new option that you did not have before, and I don't think that it is an option that you should take lightly. That does not mean that it is an option that you don't use. You need to evaluate what you've heard and what is going on and make an appropriate decision. There were other options, just punting it and waiting for elections. There could have been, I suppose, recall election, but this option has been created. Based on what I'm hearing, I don't think this is necessarily retroactive, because if coaching July has been going on within the last two weeks, then there is moral turpitude. I would ask that you consider everything you've heard and do your best. Thank you.
Mr. DeLuca? And then following Mr. DeLuca is Timothy Sparling.
Hello. I'm just wanting to say, I'm not sure how we went from unwanted advances to rape, but I wanted to first say how excited I am about...
Can you state your name? Can you please state your name, even on our Reddit, for the record? State your name and place our residence for the record.
Can I start again, then? I'm Lori DeLuca from Tempe. I just wanted to say how excited I am about this vote today regarding your intentionally deceitful prop done to be used selectively as an ongoing political weapon using yourselves as a kangaroo court. I'm excited for us today, you progressives who don't care about the real law, get to show us how the progressive agenda of equality works. Ms. Arredondo, I have articles here in which was written about you and Uncle Ben during an FBI sting, making deals with developers.
Mr. DeLuca, you need to state... Mr. DeLuca, you need to stay on topic.
Mr. Keating, I have here a public record form, text back and forth with the Chief of Staff, Elizabeth Higginson.
Mr. DeLuca, you need to stay on topic with this.
And I'm going to tell you why it's on topic. It's on topic because this is in regards to your Prop 418, which allows people to be removed for corruption, moral turpitude. Yes, that is what it says. So I'm going to go down this list, and I'm going to talk about her, Ms. Adams' order of protection, yours, Mr. Mayor, when you actually were accused of child...
Mr. DeLuca, let me tell you something. You have to stick to the topic.
Mr. Mayor, we have the police report here. You were accused of sexual conduct with a minor.
Mr. DeLuca, please stick to the topic.
And Mr. Navarro, we have here, which disappeared from the court cases, in which he was texting naked pictures with one of the city of Tempe employees.
All right, Mr. DeLuca, you need to stick to the topic, please.
It's the topic. So I would like to know how all of you are justifying your positions. I'd like to see each of you vote each other off. Mr. Keating... Well, I mean, that's the, you know, equality, right? You're all for equality, so since you're all morally turpitude, then you should just all vote each other off, and we can start from scratch. Because right now, you who are all for the underserved in the community, the only people that are underserved are the hardworking taxpayers that have to deal with this. So vote yourself off. Mr. Keating, I have this, your public records, in which you say to the Chief of Staff, "Please don't share with Mayor and council, but don't say it's from me. Don't make me do that," she says, "please do." So, in light of the progressive agenda, I think we should take care of your toxic masculinity and get rid of you. So we'll get rid of you. You for corruption, Joel for sleeping and sending text messages, you for child, you for promoting Angela Davis and breaking the rule... And breaking... And breaking 38503, which is a conflict of interest, giving money to herself, and Jennifer Adams for breaking into her ex-girlfriend's cabin and having to have an order of protection.
Next is Timothy Sparling.
Thank you.
Going to be difficult to follow. Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, council members. My name is Timothy Sparling. I'm a lawyer, entrepreneur, social activist, resident of Tempe. I've been fortunate enough to never have been sexually assaulted in my lifetime. However, some years ago, someone very close to my heart was raped. I saw her struggle with the psychological and emotional fallout of her rape, and simple things like going to work or making dinner suddenly became almost impossible for her. I watched as she laid on the couch for hours because she lacked the emotional will to continue pushing through life. I saw the pain well up inside her every day, and I held her hand as she relived her trauma over and over again. The toll is unimaginable to anyone who's never lived it. I personally know one of Colby Granville's victims, and while she is a victim in the sense that he manipulated her for his own sick sexual pleasure, she is in reality a survivor. This survivor is one of the most gentle, courageous, and kind persons I've ever met, but the damage Colby Granville's perverse actions have caused her is still visible beneath all that compassion. At this point in my life, I know a survivor when I see one, and when I look in her eyes, I see the same struggle I saw all those years ago. I see her fight for every ounce of normalcy she can, and I'm reminded of how men like Colby Granville can completely destroy someone's life in a matter of minutes. Mr. Granville, you do not owe me, but I'm nonetheless a testament to just how far your actions impact people. I'm deeply hurt and personally offended that you are a member of my profession and enjoy a position of leadership in this city that I call my home. As a lawyer, I have the utmost respect for the process of law, and I know it is profoundly important for all of us to safeguard the rights of everyone in civil society, even if we don't think they deserve it. But it is also important that this body be reminded that Colby Granville does not have a right to his office, and that he serves at the whim of the citizens of Tempe. This council must be reminded that through this hearing, Colby Granville is receiving all the process that he is due. Your refusal to remove Colby Granville would send a clear message to the public, a message stating that you don't care about the women forced to live through what Colby Granville has done to them, a statement that survivors of sexual assault everywhere are not worthy of justice, a statement that the people of my life are not worthy of justice, that I am not worthy of justice. The future is uncertain, but I can promise you that this body's failure to remove Colby Granville will not soon be forgotten, because we will not let you forget what you will have done here. The seeds you would have cast away will take hold, and dissent will be sown by your inaction. One way or another, the public will hold you accountable for what you do this day. Thank you.
Next is Sonia Malik. Sonia Malik, and then following Sonia is Jody Liggett.
Hello, my name is Sonia Malik, and I'm a Tempe native as well as a Tempe Preparatory Academy alumni. I attended Tempe Prep from 2008 to 2013. I knew about an incident regarding Mr. Granville before you all knew. In the spring of 2014, a peer of mine confided in me about an incident with Mr. Granville. We were not close friends, but since we both graduated from TPA, she felt the need to confide in me. At the time, I thought two things. One, that was weird. Two, why would a former 39-year-old teacher from our old high school insert himself into the hectic, unstable, and dramatic lives of a 17- to 19-year-old just entering college? It wasn't until I read in an Arizona Central article in January of 2018 highlighting Mr. Granville's firing from TPA that I was reminded of the conversation with my peer in 2014. Reading the article helped me connect the dots. It made me realize that my instincts were correct, and that weird was not the correct adjective to describe Mr. Granville's predatory behavior. I admire all the women who have come forward in the last year. I also ask of you all, sitting before me, to take into consideration the experiences of the young women who have stepped forward. As a Tempe resident, I believe Mr. Granville's actions do not make him qualified to represent this community. Thank you for your time.
Following Jody is Gail Graves.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Jody Liggett. I'm the Vice President for External Affairs for Planned Parenthood Arizona, and I'm the Executive Director of Planned Parenthood Advocates of Arizona. Planned Parenthood is here to stand with students and survivors and to support them. I can't tell you what to do tonight, but I can tell you that if someone with Mr. Granville's history, knowing just the facts that are public, had applied to Planned Parenthood for a job, they would not be accepted. A candidate applying for endorsement would not be eligible. If you were a volunteer, he would be dismissed. I also want to talk to you as a Tempe resident since 1984 and a hardworking taxpayer and a survivor. Some of you know me. I'm 52 years old. I have spoken in public, I can't even tell you how many times. I spoke at the Women's March before 40,000 people. None of that scared me. I threw up before I came here. It is very difficult for survivors to come forward, and I just want to applaud all of ones that have done it here today. I pushed myself to do this because most of you know me, and you can see how uncomfortable and afraid I am. It is that hard for me to come forward? Think of all the voices that you are not hearing today or at all. There are people who will never, ever come forward. You need to be responsive to them. I am the mother of a 26-year-old who grew up in Tempe. At Planned Parenthood, we have youth programs. We trust our public officials to keep us safe. That means police. That also means protecting the integrity of our public institutions and keeping your constituents safe. Thank you for your time.
Following Gail is Emily Torres.
Hi, my name is Gail Graves. I was kind of keeping track of how many people were talking in favor and opposed, and then I thought, "I'm not here because of Colby. I'm here because of you city council people. Your job..." I keep hearing that he stands accused. From what I understand, the law gives you the right to move someone who has been charged with unlawful conduct. We are not a jury... It's not a trial. You're not a jury here tonight. Your job, and I understood it was not retroactive to current council people, is to vote for people off with unlawful conduct. That's not your job. That's our job. There's enough energy in this room where we can get a petition going, and honestly, Colby, I would sign it. But it's not your job. It would be abuse of your power for you to remove somebody who is not lawfully charged with something. I think it's our job, not yours. And when nationwide people are abusing their power and changing the laws to suit them, you don't have the right to remove him. Let us do it. Thank you.
Emily, following Emily is Ethan Clay.
Hi, I'm Emily Torres, and I have a poem to convey my feelings about my sexual assault. It wasn't until I was 17 when I realized what had happened to me. I blocked the memory in my head. I told myself it never happened. It wasn't until I was 17 when I realized I lost my innocence at a young age. The years that were meant for me for being silly and naive, I didn't have that. I grew up too fast. I learned the coolness of the world too quick. I did not have a normal childhood. Now that I am 19, I wish that you could hold me without me wanting to cry because of a man who touched me. You didn't mean any harm, and I know that, but neither did he, and he still hurt me. He kissed me and touched my breasts. None of that was developed for someone to get turned on for, but he did. He stripped away my innocence, the little girl who only wished to be little. I am a survivor, believe me. Even though I can't tell you the age of when it occurred, it happened. So here's one thing: Believe the people with evidence and the stories, because it has happened to more than one person. Do not demean them. They have themselves for that. I've hated myself for years, and I don't need someone else to do it for me. I need you to believe me, because it happened to me, too. So listen and understand that the people who tell you the truth are the people who walk this world with cruel minds, whether they are older and no longer the same, regardless of the character, and regardless of who they are now. They did what they did, and they should never be forgiven. We shouldn't have someone like this in our council. We shouldn't... I shouldn't have to stand here and say that I was sexually assaulted at whatever age I was because I blocked it in my memory. And it's really hard to see all these people behind me having to share their stories. We shouldn't even have to decide to kick you off. You shouldn't even be there in the first place. We shouldn't have to debate, and the power that you hold, you should not hold. But I guess we're not ready to have a conversation yet, because here you stand in front of me looking with a blank face. So what I say to you is to do your job, and to not have someone who's a rapist on your council, because they did what they did, as I stated. Their character doesn't change regardless if they wrote a good recommendation, regardless if in person, in blank face, they're nice to you, but in the dark, they aren't. Thank you.
Ethan. Following Ethan is John Webster.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell. Good evening, council members. For the record, my name is Ethan Clay. Some of you may know me as the Chair of the D-26 Democratic Party, but I want to make it clear that tonight I am speaking, first of all, as a Tempe resident. While I grew up, I went to Coronado, Dills-Soul. I first moved to Tempe proper in 2014, and I met somebody who's given me permission to share this story tonight. They had met Mr. Granville, and through a series of events, he ended up sexually assaulting her. She did not go forward to the police, and when the news stories started coming out, she chose not to make her story heard. And it's because, like many people have talked about tonight, she did not want to be revictimized by drugging up these memories. And so if she is out there, I can only imagine who else is out there. The second reason I'd like to speak tonight is because a few short months after I had learned that conversation back in 2015, I was sexually assaulted while at Arizona State University. I chose not to report it, and I remember she was a close friend, and we ran in the same social circles, and I saw her a lot. Every single time I saw her, I was ridden with anxiety, with fear, with helplessness. Now, I was... I'm blessed to say that I was able to talk with her. She took accountability for her actions, and I was able to forgive her. But I cannot imagine if somebody who had sexually assaulted me was my representative in this chamber. I cannot imagine the amount of grief and revictimization I'd have to be going through every time I saw his messages on Facebook, every time I saw his name in the news. So I'm asking you tonight, in the face of his refusal to take accountability for his actions, force him to take accountability for his actions, remove him from office. Thank you for your leadership so far in allowing this process to come to this place. I know you will all make the right decision tonight. Thank you.
John Webster. Following Mr. Webster is Caroline Webster.
Hello, my name's John Webster, and I'm a 20-year resident of Tempe and also a parent of a TPA daughter who's had Colby as a teacher and also track coach. And I've had a couple of years of direct experience with Colby at TPA, and I just wanted to speak up and say my experience with Colby was as a very competent and caring and professional person. And I wanted... A lot of people have talked about their opinion, and I wanted to share my actual experience. And for me, I feel like originally, I thought I heard that the process was limited to the evidence or the experience people have, and not necessarily what they think, and I just wanted to share my actual experience. Thank you.
Caroline. Following Caroline is Randy Perez.
Hello, my name is Caroline Webster, and I am a resident of Tempe. I am also a student at Tempe Prep. I had him as a teacher in 8th grade, and I have never experienced anything unprofessional about Mr. Granville. He was also my cross-country coach for two years, and he even lengthened the season to twice as long as it should have been just because we wanted to keep running. And that just shows how much he cares about his students and how he would never do anything to harm them. And I know him personally, and I've never experienced anything negative about him. He encouraged me to grow as a person through running, and I'm still running today, and keeping in mind those 10 rules, how running applies to life. I think he makes Tempe a better place. We have a little free library in our front yard because of him. I trust him, and I think he's a good person, and I admire his dedication to the city. Based on my personal experience, I don't think he should be removed from the council. Thank you.
Mr. Perez.
My name is Randy Perez. I've lived with him for five years. I feel so sick just standing here, and I can't imagine how sick the folks behind me feel. But if there's anything that's good that's come of this, and obviously I'm here speaking removal of Councilmember Granville, I can't believe that you're such a narcissist that you're sitting here right now. But the fact that, and the strength of the people behind me to tell their stories in a public setting, in their local government, and stand up and have a cathartic space like that, I want to thank the council for creating that space. I know that it was difficult, but the power and strength of these people is so beyond me that I can't even believe it. This is a question not about Prop 418. I really don't care. What I really care about is, does this council that we elected, that we work for, that we have relationships, have the strength and the leadership and the moral capacity to do what is right? And if this is not a unanimous vote, I need you all to go and look in the mirror and really think about your actions and what it means to the folks behind me. Sexual assault is so difficult. I remember when the Brett Kavanaugh nominations were happening, my mom suddenly remembered an incident that happened to her 40 years ago that she hadn't thought about once, not once. And she called me, and she was so upset. And she called me, and she was so upset, and there's so many people in this city that have those stories that they haven't thought about, they're just like my mother, they're just like the folks standing behind me. And I, I just don't understand how, we leave this room tonight, and this man is still on this Tempe City Council, and you still sit there like this, and you have this blank face, that I don't really know what the hell we're doing in this room. I don't know what any of you are doing in the council. I have absolute confidence that after hearing this, and such powerful stories from so many diverse backgrounds and so many different people, that you are going to do the right thing. If there's any electoral considerations going on in here, I would be blown away that that's where your minds are at. I don't think that's where your minds are at, but I just want to remind you that this is not an electoral question, this is a moral question, this is a leadership question. And I really urge you to do the right thing. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you to every single person here who has shared their story. You are valued, and I value you personally. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the cards I have. Natalie Henderson?
Hello, City Council. My name's Natalie Henderson. I'm not a resident of Tempe, but I did go to school with, at Tempe Preparatory Academy, and Colby Granville was my teacher freshman year as well as junior year. So, I'm sorry, I'm a little shaken up, it's taken me a while to confront you face to face, and I'm like proud of myself for being here. So, as you know, I was a former student of Colby Granville, and I recently read an article about him possibly not being able to pass the bar for his law, or be on this council. I have to say, he was one of the worst teachers I have ever had at Tempe Prep, but this is my experience. I had been there since eighth grade, and I had graduated high school of May 2018. I began hearing horror stories of this teacher before even beginning in his class. I had him my freshman year, and he told me and my parents in a conference that I would never make it out of Tempe Prep or graduate, and I would always be a below-average student in class. He used to embarrass me in front of the class, and one day he even said to me and one of my peers, a disgusting inappropriate comment about her mother, and made sexual jokes about her as well. He also told me in class that if I had ever managed to get a good grade, that he would give me the clock off the wall, because I'm so impatient to get out of this class. What he didn't know is how uncomfortable and miserable he made me. Later, my junior year, I was put into his class, and he would constantly make sexual jokes about my friends and peer. He one time looked at my classmates' leg area, keep in mind we wore modest skirts, and proceeded to say, "What happened to your beautiful legs?" He would, he would keep this girl after class with the door shut, which is completely against conduct. He told her how he thought about her every single night before he went to bed, and one time, I believed, he believed I was struggling in his class simply because I had a bad day, and later emailed me that night and gave me his personal phone number, and said, "Contact me anytime if you feel like you need something." He graded me unfairly on tests and over lectures due to this, not responding to this act or gesture of texting him or seeing him as a beloved teacher. He made the class, which is a history class, biased on his opinions, and not to mention when we would go over materials, he would disregard any comments I made, as if I was stupid. He made us read Hitler's Mein Kampf, and stated that in today's standard, Hitler wasn't that bad of a guy. He was rude and arrogant, especially when I told him that I did not want to discuss the book due to the gravity of it. Instead of him being concerned, he insisted that I was just being lazy, and not reading a book that was not part of the curriculum. What is frustrating is that I went to the school and I told them my concerns about his teaching.
You need to wrap up.
Yes.
You need to wrap up. You can wrap up.
That's all I really wanted to say, is just, I don't see how he's on this council, and I don't see how he should ever be teaching anywhere. I have younger sisters, and I don't want them anywhere near you. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. If there's any other cards, can you please hand them to our city clerk? And he'll get them to our city clerk. You're gonna have to...
Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, my name's Sid Friedy, I'm a resident of Tempe. I'm not here tonight to really defend or condemn Councilman Granville, I'm really here to condemn the process that brought us here tonight. Charter Amendment 418 is the basis for this vote called by council tonight, referencing Section 206 added to the city charter, and it states, "City council may remove a council member by affirmative vote of five of seven council members with due process and clear and convincing evidence for unlawful conduct involving moral perpetuity, fraud, or corruption." Moral perpetu, fraud, and corruption are defined by a court of law, not by a council meeting. 418 was an amendment fostered on the citizens of Tempe by selected few that on the surface sounded unthreatening and reasonable, but it gave the council the power to be judge, jury, and executioner without the democratic process. That's a violation of inherent rights guaranteed to all citizens by the U.S. Constitution by the Fifth Amendment, which states, "No one shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law." It doesn't state not due process of council. I've been a resident of Tempe for thirty-nine years, and I've never been so concerned right now about what's going on in Tempe with the issues we face with homelessness, gentrification, workforce housing, threats to our historical neighborhoods, and other issues, but yet we're here tonight. I ask the council to consider the legal, financial, and political ramifications, and abandon the vote this evening based upon 206. There are already tested measures that the city government censured any city employee perceived to have violated the public trust. I encourage you to follow that path, as so desired, and not fall down the slippery slope of 418 and 206. Let the voters of Tempe decide by a valid city election. Thank you.
Next is Deb Zajak.
Hello, my name is Deborah Zajak, I'm a resident of Tempe for the last twenty-four years. And I just want to state, there is a difference. People came up here giving examples of an employee being let go for various reasons. And I think, though, it's different with with Colby, because he's not an employee, he's an elected official, you know, someone we put into office. So I think that's a little bit different, and should be handled differently than just employee-employer relationship. I'm here to talk about Proposition 418, in that I think, you know, this is kind of the fruition of it, but I think that when it was initially proposed, that there was an agenda behind it, and that concerns me. And it was also stated by this council that it would not be retroactive, and that it would be enforced with clear and convincing evidence. And when I heard the attorney speak about the independent attorney that we had, when she was saying, "It's most probably true," I found that very concerning. And it just makes me sad to see this happening, because I think there's other reasons behind this, and some of the people who I think are counsel behind it, I feel bad, because in so many ways, I do support them on so many other issues and what they want to achieve for Tempe. So this whole situation makes me sad. Between the decision last night at the council meeting and what's happening today, it's just very upsetting to me. So, anyway, that's all I have to say, and I'm just really not happy about this whole thing. So, I would like to see Colby stay. So, thank you.
Thanks. Next is Ron Tapscott.
Good evening, Ron Tapscott, I'm a resident of the city. Prop 418 is in defiance of separation of powers. A legislative body, yourselves, the council, has been turned into a quasi-judicial body. It creates its own rules of evidence, it alone defines rules of investigation, and it defines what is moral perpetuity. It gives a majority of the council the right to expel any members the majority finds objectionable. Minority and dissident voices can be silenced, and worse, council members may mute their own voice in fear that this could be applied to them. This is an attempt by some to increase and maximize their power. All veil behind issues of concern and righteousness, but manufactured with misinformation, spin, and messaging. This makes the entire enterprise anti-democratic. I've been involved in politics for over fifty years. I came through the civil rights movement, the anti-war movement, and the labor movement, where all struggles for justice and democracy often cost blood and life. I decided six years ago to continue my involvement in our city, to encourage neighborhood engagement and debate, and yes, sometimes with sharp elbows, all done with an eye to the storm clouds of authoritarianism that are gathering around the globe and here in our country. It was this involvement to fortify our democratic process and keep the forces of reaction from entering the gates of our city. It appears from the current events, it has entered our house.
Next is Linda Martin, and then following Linda is B.C. Brown.
My name is Linda Martin, I'm a resident of Hudson Manor, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide input to the city on this very important issue. I also really appreciate the level of concern and courage that it has taken for people to come up and speak here tonight. I'm a longtime Tempe resident, I've been here over forty years. I started becoming more involved with the Tempe government late last year, when I retired, which was hard for me, from my job. I came to appreciate, while I worked, the power of having really clearly defined processes, goals, expectations, from both a behavioral and a role-based perspective, and the importance of treating others with respect and integrity. I've been concerned since last week's work session. My husband and I had actually come to that meeting more, really interested in your affordable housing plan that you were developing. And I hadn't really been following the Colby Granville case, but I became very concerned about the process that's being followed. I find the unpleasantness of most of the dialogue that has occurred both last week and this week, to use the words of somebody else that spoke earlier tonight, unsettling and distressing, to say the least. I haven't slept since last week, very, last week's meeting, very well, because it's important for me that, that the city do the right thing. Last week at the time, I thought, wow, Proposition 418 allows the council to remove a member from office after an investigation and public hearings have occurred, and if there is clear and convincing evidence of unlawful conduct. However, no formal charges have been filed by either Phoenix or Tempe, there are no active cases. Outside counsel, Sarah Barnes had indicated, after her independent review of the case, that the accusations in these, or her words, were more probably true. And for me, that was far from clear and convincing. These incidents are clearly in the past, and it had been specifically stated that 418 cannot be applied retroactively to remove Granville from council. And so, and last week, I questioned why the council was spending so much time on this and not focusing on all the work that's, that we have as a city ahead of us. Even now, I have even greater concerns. The council is now, has the ability with 418 to act as judge, jury, and executioner in determining whether anyone on the council is fit to serve? This is quite a responsibility, and, you know, I, I haven't really followed all of the details of the case, but that's not my job.
Please, please let him finish.
To do it correctly, I would expect that there would need to be significant effort committed to clearly define the judicial process that's being used, and to ensure that all the necessary information is being gathered, identify the rules and the definitions and guiding principles, including the statute of limitations that should be followed, and to really define safeguards to ensure that the overall process is objective, efficient, and lawful for all involved, and not violating anybody's rights. I, I've been, in my many, many years, I've also been the victim of discrimination and injustice, and so, it's important, I like to see both sides of the story. How do we ensure that we're doing the right thing? I want to be, to continue to be proud of the city. It's important to me that this process be used to evaluate a person to be fit for the council, be fair and objective, and follow well-defined standards.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Next is B.C. Brown.
Thank you, council members, mayor, for allowing me to speak. My name is B.C. Brown, I am actually a Phoenix resident. However, I have lived within feet of the Forty-Eighth Street-Tempe-Phoenix line for, since pretty much I came here to Arizona. One, so I have this on the record, as a differently-abled individual, hard of hearing, part of the deaf community, please invest in a better hearing and/or captioning system. I've had to have too many of my friends around me repeat what's being said today, because the audio cuts in and out, and also sounds like chipmunks kind of through a tin can. That gives you a better... I would like to state first that a number of years ago, and until very recently, I have been a supporter of Councilman Granville and his initiatives here in Tempe to better the neighborhoods. He's been a staunch component, or proponent of betterment of the Tempe neighborhoods, of arts, of literature, and also against the gentrification. However, as a survivor of sexual assault and rape, to say the least, the recent testimonies and evidence that's been made apparent after reading through them, as anyone who has stated, or anyone who has been a survivor, or is a survivor, or has been through anything like this, we become very adept, very quickly, at identifying the signs of sexual predator's behavior. It's a safeguard for our own safety. It's something we come to recognize very quickly, because if we don't, we're going to go through the same trauma again, and again, and again. And unfortunately, Mr. Granville's actions and the testimony that's been released is disheartening and incredibly concerning. From my understanding of what Prop 418 did, was allow the council, the council to take into account any evidence that's come to light of improper actions of a council member. I would state that any ongoing investigation into any improper conduct while a council person has held office is improper, is grounds to be removed temporarily. Yes, Mr. Granville is an elected official, as many people have stated, which does not necessarily make it entirely the council's job to remove him. However, his position is one of public trust, that's what he was elected on.
Can you wrap up?
And I would state at this point that it is disheartening that a elected official would not choose to step back, if not resign entirely, but at least step back until any investigations could be made into him. And that could come to full legality.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Next item on our agenda is to conduct and consider, and then take action on the potential removal of a council member.
I'll have the card afterwards to save time. Mayor, members of council, my name is Judy Tapscott, and I'm an eighteen-year resident of the city of Tempe. I retired from the city of Tempe as deputy manager of the Community Services Department, Social Services Division, after twenty years of service. I've been chairperson of the Altamira Neighborhood Association for the past fourteen years, although tonight I speak only for myself. I have great respect for this city and the people who live here. I love my job with the city, and I love my neighborhood, but what I have seen in the recent past disturbs me greatly. I was opposed to Proposition 418 when it was first presented. I feared that the dislike of one council member could result in that person being wrongly removed from office. The proposition passed with significant support. This did not surprise me. Voters support moral standards, and so do I. The amended city charter now defines reasons for forfeiture of office. Quote, "The mayor or council member shall forfeit his/her office if he/she is convicted of a crime involving moral turpitude." This language appears to require that a judicial process must occur before an elected official can be removed. The council is not a court of law. You are a political body. There are no rules of evidence or procedures to guide your decisions. There are no legal precedents to follow. If you decide that one of your duly-elected colleagues is guilty of moral turpitude and you remove him, you are acting like judges, but you are legislators. Arguably, you are going beyond what the charter amendment authorizes. Bottom line, decisions about who is worthy of membership on the Tempe City Council should be made by voters or by real courts. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kiwi?
I just wanted to correct something, is that language was changed in 418, so it's changed from a conviction from beyond a reasonable doubt standard to a clear and convincing evidence of unlawful conduct of moral turpitude, corruption, frauds. It's actually changed now.
Wait, wait, let her respond, and please let her, wait, wait, please let her respond, please, she can respond.
Excuse me, I just wanted to say that I was sent this language from the Tempe City Cler-- can I finish? I was sent this language from the Tempe City Clerk's office as part of the charter language. Now, if that's not correct...
No, I made a mistake. It's, that is part of it, but it was added to, so if, of course, if you're convicted of the crime, yes, but then the addition of clear and convincing...
This is, this is the language. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
We added to it though with 418.
Judy, wait, wait, Ms. Baumann, can you please read?
Thank you, mayor, members of council. Yes, I think I can provide some clarification. The Charter, Section 207, says judge of qualifications. The council shall be the judge of the election and qualifications of its members and of the grounds of forfeiture of their office, and for that purpose, and then it goes on and does talk about clear and convincing evidence. Proposition 418 that has been referenced tonight and passed by the voters is Section 206, and that is for removal of office by fellow council members. That is a separate section.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number two, is to conduct a hearing to consider and then take action on the potential removal of a council member Granville from office pursuant to the city of Tempe Charter, Section 2.06D, including the possible adoption of a resolution memorializing such action and authorizing the staff to proceed as directed. Councilwoman Nworo?
Mayor, I'll have to call in for the rest of the meeting, I'll be on the phone.
As I noted earlier, the sole purpose of tonight's hearing is for the city council to consider the evidence that has been presented to the work-study session memo of April 4th, 2019, and for Councilmember Granville to have the opportunity to respond to the evidence. This hearing does not involve allegations against any other council members, members of the public or city staff. Pursuant to the city charter, Section 2.07, the city council is the judge of the qualifications of its members. While the city council values the opinions of the public concerning this matter, opinion is not evidence and will not be considered as evidence for purposes of this hearing. Let me outline the process that will be followed at tonight's hearing. Evidence will be presented by outside legal counsel, Ms. Sarah Barnes. Councilmembers will have the opportunity to ask questions of Ms. Barnes. Councilmember Granville or his attorney will have the opportunity to ask questions of Ms. Barnes, and council members will have the opportunity to ask follow-up questions. Councilmember Granville or his attorney will have the opportunity to respond to the evidence and present evidence on Councilmember Granville's behalf. Councilmembers will have the opportunity to ask further questions, and the city council will deliberate and call for the vote. Now, I would like to start the hearing by asking our legal counsel, Ms. Sarah Barnes, to summarize the evidence that has been presented to the city council. Ms. Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell. I'm going to do my best to summarize that which has already been provided to the council and to the public, contained in my memorandum and reply documents, as well as the other documents that have been presented and made available for the public. My investigation, I was hired to investigate and basically wrangle the facts, find all the facts related to this investigation and to allegations against Councilman Granville, and to then apply the standard of proof that was presented to me to apply, to determine whether the code of conduct had been violated, certainly not making any findings or recommendations with respect to any sort of criminal charges, because that is not my task, only to determine whether the code of conduct, whether there was a legal basis to determine that there was a code of conduct violation. Initially, I interviewed the detective who handled the investigation for the city of Phoenix. She had done a thorough investigation by interviewing the three alleged victims who made the accusations. She interviewed others at the school. She interviewed the school TPA's attorney, so she did a thorough review, so I interviewed her, and in addition to reviewing the incident report of the city of Phoenix, relied on what she provided me. In the incident report, those interviews are recounted, there was one alleged, one woman who said that she had had an actual consensual relationship with Mr. Granville, but that it occurred shortly after she graduated from high school from TPA, where he taught, while she wasn't taught by him. He had interactions with her, including on occasion what she believed to be flirtatious interaction. She did not turn, she graduated in 2015. She turned eighteen in August, and then saw him at some city of Tempe function in the community in September of 15. After that, he, friend requested her and asked her out to lunch. They had on-and-off contact until February, at which time, so at this point, she's now just less than a year removed from the high school, invited her to the movies. She declined a couple of times, that eventually went, and again, I'm just summarizing, not recounting her whole statements. She identified herself as being sheltered, she struggled with sexual identity, which Mr. Granville acknowledged in the interview of him. She said that he bought alcohol for her on numerous occasions when they were together, and also when they were in Las Vegas. He told her about an incident where he had been admonished by the school for inappropriate touching of some kind of a student. There was no elaboration on that. The next woman I'll talk about is the gal who graduated two years prior in 2013. She was connected to, she knew him but had not been taught by him. She was connected to him through another teacher to discuss a trip abroad that she would be taking because he traveled. She met with him sometime in that summer. She was still seventeen at the time. They had coffee, then went to breakfast the next week. He flirted with her. They had several occasions to have meals together. Then, after that, went back to his house on one of the evenings, went on his roof. She said that he put her hand on his chest, talked to her in detail about sex in various She then told him that she was still, that she was still seventeen. She says that he said that that meant that he could not have a good-night kiss. He, while he admits that this situation occurred, he says that when he learned that she was seventeen, he immediately shuffled her out. When she borrowed some books from his travel books, she went back to his house some months later to return the books, and she felt that he blocked her pathway from leaving his house and shut the door, kissed her without her consent. She became unnerved. He then stepped towards her again, put her, put his hands on her shoulders, and kissed her again without her consent, at which point she pushed him away. And then she says that he told her that they should probably, she should probably go before something happened that they were going to regret. He indicated in his interview that he doesn't recall that happening, doesn't recall her coming back, doesn't recall returning the books, and that he didn't think that sounded like something he would have done with respect to the kiss and the blocking of the door. With respect to the third woman, also a graduate from 2013, from TPA, and again, was not taught by him but knew him. She did know the first woman that I mentioned had gone out on one date with her when they were in high school, and then renewed their friendship some years later, recently, but neither of them knew of the other situation or interactions with Granville until they discussed it later. She also identifies as lesbian but had some sexual identity issues, and issues, I'm using that word broadly, generally, it wasn't elaborated on what there was, but there was some confusion. One year after she graduated, Mr. Granville reached out to her and said that he specifically waited a year before he reached out to her to have contact with her. He asked her to a couple of different things, coffee, food. She initially declined, but eventually, after some amount of contact, I'm not sure which, she wasn't clear, she decided to engage with him. He came to dorm rooms that summer, so that would have been the summer of 14, at the Arizona Technical Institute, where she was with some of her friends that went there. He brought alcohol and drank and hung out with him that night. At another party, when she was with him in 2014, they both drank, he kissed her, she pulled away, and then he later apologized for that. He also went to Tucson, where she was going to school, stayed with her at her apartment, so this is the same year, 2014, and at that point, there was an incident or some sort of flirtation with her friend who was her same age, but that's, but nothing happened between them. The following fall, so 2015, she began speaking with him more. She had gone through a breakup, had been in a long relationship. He asked her to go on a trip to San Francisco for New Year's. They met at his house numerous times to watch movies. One of those times, this is before New Year's, she came over to watch movies, he gave her gin, gin and cranberry, which they drank. She determined at some point she couldn't drive and asked to stay. She asked to stay on the couch, he suggested, this is her talking, he suggested that she stay in his bed. She says that he spooned her from behind while they were in the bed, and that he put his hand down her pants and digitally penetrated her vagina, and made comments about having sex with a man would be no different than sex with a woman with a strap on. She felt that he continued to touch her and put his hands on her vagina, and she pushed away, finally got up and left crying. She emailed the next day, she acknowledges that she emailed him the next day and was taking blame for it, thinking that it was her fault that it occurred. She said he didn't respond to that email but responded in person. They had conversations, so she decided to later go on that trip to San Francisco because she believed that they had now established boundaries. She went on the trip with him, and while he suggested that they share a bed, she said that nothing happened on that trip. She also talked about the fact that he did like to hang out on the roof, and that he specifically told her about the situation that happened on the roof with the other gal who was still seventeen at the time. Again, this is a situation where Mr. Granville in the interview did not deny that it happened that he, she slept in the bed with him, but did not recall doing any of those things or doing anything inappropriate sexually to her. There was also another incident of alleged contact with a minor at TPA, even in February of 2018, where he asked to follow an eighth grader at TPA on Instagram, and her dad took note of it, and they did discuss it with the detective, but because nothing else came of it, they decided not to pursue any, anything criminal with respect to that. I've also reviewed part of the personnel file and numerous student reviews from TPA in which there are repeated comments, at least ten to twelve, I believe, by students that say he made inappropriate comments in classrooms, acted inappropriately, especially towards the women, and had lots of social media interaction with students. The detective stated specifically that she believed the women, she believed that they were targeted by Mr. Granville because they were young, vulnerable, having sexual identity struggles. I think two of them even having some psychiatric issues, depression issues, being treated actively for depression. He believes that he uses, she believes that he used his position as a teacher at the school and their status to manipulate. She said that they're, she didn't question any of their stories at all. The reason that she did not move forward at the prosecution at the time is because they were fearful of testifying in a, in a trial. As everybody has seen, there's the interview transcript of my interview of Mr. Granville. It was the first interview that he gave anybody. Previously had declined to speak, with the exception of, I think, one or two statements to a journalist. Again, as I've pointed out in my memorandum, there were numerous times where he did not give unequivocal denial, unequivocal denials. He made statements such as, "I don't remember that, I can't recall that happening, that doesn't sound like me, I don't think I would have done something like that." That was rampant throughout the interview. The only unequivocal denial that he gave me during that time was to the provision of alcohol. He said unequivocally that he did not do that, he denied doing that. He didn't then, nor has he ever presented any emails, texts, or documents to refute what these women have recounted, and I should say that the women's statements to the detective are consistent with emails and statements made during the Tempe, when Tempe Prep fired him, as well as emails that were later sent to this council. So there's never been anything to refute that that's been provided by Mr. Granville. He admitted in the interview that he knew the women were vulnerable, talked several times about their sexual identity issues, at least two of them, what he believed to be psychiatric issues. He admitted in the interview that he believed he made bad life choices, that he shouldn't have dated the one woman, that he acknowledged that the council had right to be concerned about the allegations, that he understood that. I'm sorry, I'm just looking back at my notes, see if I covered everything that I wanted on the summary. Oh, and as somebody already said earlier, he did several different times compare his preference for dating young women, as young as eighteen, to communism in the 50s, or being gay in the 80s, or having HIV in the 80s, and he believed that was the stigma on it, and that's why he told the one gal not to tell anybody that he was dating her. I knew at the time also that the state bar was investigating him, as well as the Board of Education was investigating him, which Mr. Granville acknowledged in his interview. Since then, the state bar has voted eight to nothing for probable cause finding to file a complaint against Mr. Granville as an attorney for false statements, furnishing alcohol, dishonest conduct, and unprofessional conduct. My understanding is, before they file the complaint, they always attempt... My understanding is before they file the complaint, they always attempt a mediation type of process to see if they can come up with an agreeable resolution. So I imagine some sort of sanction for what they believe is this behavior in lieu of pursuing an actual hearing. If not, they'll pursue the complaint. My understanding is the Board of Education has not completed its investigation. I also determined during the investigation that Tempe Prep fired Mr. Granville virtually on the spot, that they did so after final exams had been taken, but before he even graded the final exams, based on their conversations with the accusers, and based on all the things that were in his personnel file. I do not have information on the exact reasonings behind their firing. We just know the timing of it, and he was immediately terminated. There has not been any kind of lawsuit filed by Mr. Granville regarding that firing. These actions, the things that these women have said occurred, all occurred while he was a city council member, a teacher, and a lawyer. The sexual assault investigation and the investigation into the provision of alcohol to the minors has not resulted in charges at this point. However, I have noted in the documents provided that while there are no charges at this point, there is no statute of limitations for sexual assault in Arizona, and he did not have, if he engaged in that unlawful conduct, he could still be prosecuted. And so while 2.06D also says that you may not, that you may remove him with a vote of five out of seven with due process and clear and convincing evidence for unlawful conduct involving moral perpetuity, fraud, or corruption, 2.06B also says that he forfeits that position for conviction of moral perpetude, and at this point, that process is still possibility. The Code of Conduct that I reviewed in addition to the 2.06D being added were the sections of the Personnel Rules and the Ethics Handbook that are applicable to all city council members and their conduct. Those rules are not being abusive in attitude, language, behavior, or conduct toward the public. It's another employee or the public, I'm focusing on the public. Not engage in behavior resulting in physical harm or the threat thereof to the public. Not engaging in behavior that does not meet a reasonable standard of workplace civility and respect in his or her interactions with the public. Not engaging in conduct on or off duty that is such a nature that it causes discredit to the city. So in addition to the sections regarding moral perpetude, fraud, and corruption, these other sections apply with respect to the Code of Conduct, and that's what I was initially asked to look at and provided my findings and recommendations on.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council that anyone would like to ask Ms. Sarah Barnes? Yeah, oh, Councilmember Navarro, are you still, are you on the phone?
Yes, ma'am, I'm still on the phone.
Any questions from the council for Ms. Barnes? Yeah, Vice Mayor QB.
So I know we heard a couple of members of the public talk about your statement about it just more probable than not, and they thought it sounded very weak in terms of an evidentiary standard, but is it not true that the clear and convincing evidence standard is more probable true than not? It's those words, literally those words?
When initially engaged to do the investigation and my initial findings, I was asked to look at the Code of Conduct and whether it had been violated based on a preponderance of the evidence standard that was prior to the enactment of the other section. My understanding, it's been provided to you by Ms. Bowman, the standards are preponderance of the evidence, which is more probably true than not. Clear and convincing evidence has been defined as substantially more likely true than not, and those are the differences, and those standards have been provided to you.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, could you explain more about the state bar and their findings regarding Colby? I know you said it was 8-0, and you said something about mediation. If you could just explain that process a little bit better to us?
There are various ethical rules that they investigated him for violating, and they determined, there was eight of them making the decision on whether or not to advance a complaint, where he's actually going to have a hearing, where his license is at issue, whether it's for some sort of suspension, censure, disbarment, whatever the case may be. They make that vote, whether there's probable cause to file that complaint. So that's what they voted, eight to nothing, that there's probable cause to pursue a complaint against him as to his legal license in Arizona, based on the things that I mentioned, which they found to be the dishonest conduct, the providing of alcohol to minors, false statements, and unprofessional conduct. As it was explained to me by one of the attorneys for the state bar, and this is a normal process, they would engage in some sort of settlement conference or mediation with the lawyer being investigated to see if a mutually agreeable resolution to this potential complaint could be reached without having to go forward with a hearing. In other words, will you accept X punishment in exchange for us not pursuing this further? Yes, then they resolve it, and it's done. If it's, if that process doesn't result in a resolution, then my understanding is they will proceed forward with the complaint, which will then be him having to go to a hearing to defend against those charges against his license.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adonis.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. I mean, one of the things you talked about was some of the response inconsistencies. Could you kind of expand on that just a little bit more in regards to, you know, what your concerns were?
His response inconsistencies in the interview?
Correct, in the interview, and then I think the reply to, I think you labeled it the reply to your responses, is that right, Mr. Granville's responses?
Well, there were several different places where he would remember very specific details about things, but then when asked about the actual allegations of the sexual advances, the unwanted sexual advances, or the kissing, also unwanted sexual advance, he didn't have recall for that. He would remember some, he would not remember something, and then with very little extra context given, all of a sudden have a very clear memory of it. It would take me several times of asking him a question to get him to answer, and then he would partially concede the answer. But again, the main, the main thing that I noted is that there were just repeated times where he did not recall, didn't remember, or would say, "I don't think I would have done something like that." There was just a lot of that instead of unequivocal denials, or when it came to those things, all of a sudden, he didn't have a clear memory at all for any of that. And it's outlined, I mean, I can read it into the record if you feel that's necessary, but it is outlined in not only my December memorandum, but in my February 15 memorandum where I addressed the points that he took issue with, with respect to my findings.
Okay. Yes.
Follow-up question, and I know, Mrs. Barnes, you spoke directly with the detective, and you mentioned a little bit about how thorough you thought that the job that was done. I mean, can you talk a little bit about the credibility and kind of what your findings were in regards to your impression of how that was conducted?
Well, I won't talk to credibility because I don't believe that that is my place in this investigation. I'll talk to what my impressions were and my, my understanding of what her interview entailed, and what her beliefs were, and her views of it, which were that she conducted this investigation for a several month period of time. She spoke with all of the accusers, additional parents, she spoke with the TPA's attorney, she attempted to speak with Mr. Granville, attempted to speak with Mr. Granville's, what was believed to be a criminal defense attorney at that time for him. She, I don't have this note right in front of me, I guess I would have to look that up, but I recall that she had been engaged in these type of investigations and/or sex crime investigations for many, many years. I want to say it was 17 to 20, somewhere in that number. And so then again, she gave me her impressions of the interviews and the believability, and she specifically recounted the very upset and traumatic way in which these women were recounting the stories to her, that they were visibly still very shaken. And so part of the reason that it was determined in the investigation not to further interview them is because it's been documented, she had conducted the interview, she certainly had more experience in that regard than myself, and there were other statements and emails from the women consistent with what they had provided to her, and it at all hadn't been documented in the police report.
Anyone else have any other questions for Ms. Barnes? Okay. Now at this time, it's an opportunity for Councilmember Granville or his attorney to ask questions of Ms. Barnes. Councilmember Granville?
You know, this is the first time I've seen our process of order here, it just kind of showed up today, so I'm going to defer to my attorney and then maybe say something when she's done.
Thank you. I'm gonna, we have a prepared statement. We were, you want me to state my name?
Yes.
I saw you looking.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jay Calhoun, I'm an attorney. I'm a former 17-year resident of Tempe, and I just moved to Chandler. We were just given the information about cross-examining or asking questions at 6:00 PM. We weren't provided that information in advance. So as you know, as an attorney, you can prepare when you're handed something at the time of an interview. So we do have a prepared statement that I would like to read and just put on the record, if that's fine. Would you like me to do that now, or would the council like me to do that at some other point? Okay, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Jay Calhoun, I'm a former resident in Tempe, resident of Tempe and current resident of Chandler. I'm speaking on behalf of Councilwoman Granville. Councilwoman Granville was represented by another attorney during his interview with Ms. Barnes, who presented the findings of her investigation last week. There are two main points I wish to express this evening. First, I will address the public comments made for and against Councilwoman Granville, the city's investigation, and the police investigation. And second, I will address the notion of due process. Before I begin, I must acknowledge that Councilwoman Granville and I believe that sexual assault is a serious matter, and it should be adjudicated in a court of law, not the press. I want to say that the three women who I have not met, that we sincerely, sincerely wish them well. A 2018 article by USA Today sums up this matter well. Few issues make people run the opposite corners of the ring more quickly than an allegation of sexual assault, especially when one of those involved is a public figure. Generally, there are two camps, those who are more likely to believe the woman who says she was sexually assaulted, and those who are more likely to believe the man who says he didn't do it. So what happens after that is where all things go wrong, and that is what I would like to speak about today. Both camps do not wait for the facts before taking sides. As humans, we naturally divide ourselves into tribes, rich or poor, attractive or not, educated, not educated, white collar versus blue collar, baby boomer versus millennial, and the list can go on for infinity. But the largest tribe is the tribe that refuses to wait until the facts are in before jumping to conclusions about whether an allegation of sexual assault rings true or not. Generally, in these situations, we have two choices. Keep up the scorched earth battles over public allegations of sexual assault, or make the choice to consider the facts before letting our partisan impulses get the best of us and bring out the worst of us, some of which we saw last week. Based on the public comments last week, people did not view Councilwoman Granville as an individual. Some of the passionate pleas last week, the call for Councilmember Granville's removal, raised the issues of domestic violence, which is not at issue here. Others shared painful stories about personal accounts that were saddening but had nothing to do with Councilwoman Granville. The majority of those who spoke placed an unreasonable burden on a national problem on the shoulders of one man, who was not responsible and is not responsible for the trauma faced by those who spoke. The topic of sexual assault is an emotional one, and I know this personally, for the accuser and the accused. But yet, the comments and the hearings fell to treated with the care and the respect that was necessary. What I witnessed was a circus with little care for the deliberative process. It was a public ostracizing of Councilwoman Granville. One young man said he felt less safe in Tempe with Colby Granville as mayor, excuse me, as member of city council. And when the city council made statements adverse to Councilwoman Granville, members publicly snapped their fingers. That demonstrates, that does not demonstrate the respect for process. It was clear that Councilwoman Granville was held as a scapegoat for all sexual assault. As we know, every allegation must be viewed individually. I, like Councilwoman Granville, recognize that for far too long, we have ignored women's voices. We get that. Recently, as a nation, we went from zero to 100 in a short amount of time without any guidelines, and at times, we lumped all men for our cues together. We see the Harvey Weinsteins of the world, the same as the little boy who hugs a girl in elementary school without her permission. And again, we must note that every allegation must be viewed individually. The benefit, if there's any, of the Weinstein scandal is that it sparked a national conversation about sexual misconduct. Let's talk about the police investigation. The fact, the police department investigated the accusations and did not bring charges. City of Tempe dissatisfied with the findings of the police. The city initiated their own investigation. Last week, Attorney Barnes, the city's sole investigator, presented the report she submitted to the council in December 2018. Ms. Barnes, supported by public funding, spent seven months investigating Councilwoman Granville. The city gave Councilwoman Granville seven days to prepare a defense at his own expense. The council's actions did not constitute due process, and at no point should public opinion substitute for it. As the remainder of my statement will demonstrate, city council failed to recognize that they were acting in a quasi-judicial capacity in this matter instead of a legislative capacity. And when the council is acting in a quasi-judicial manner, it must operate as a panel of judges, not a legislature. The council member who gave an interview to the press stating that Councilmember Granville did not speak to him privately about the matter totally ignored his judicial obligations and chose a course of actions best categorized as political opportunists. That council member was wrong to insist on Councilmember Granville's testimony when it is not sworn and within the proceedings. In fact, that same council member told Granville later that he had been advised that the louder and harder he came out against Granville publicly, the better it would serve him politically. Under the law, quasi-judicial proceedings must be accorded, must be conducted in accordance with procedural, due process, and fundamental fairness, which is the cornerstone of the American legal system. Due process of law is a constitutional guarantee that prevents governments from impacting citizens in an abusive way. In its modern form, due process includes procedural standards that courts must uphold in order to protect people's personal liberty and a range of liberty interests that statutes and regulations must not infringe upon. The Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments to the Constitution guarantee that no person, including Councilwoman Granville, shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. Under this model, strict adherence to regular procedure is the most important safeguard against tyranny. Over time, courts in the United States have ruled that due process also limits legislation and protects certain areas of individual liberty from regulation. Now, Arizona courts have defined quasi-judicial actions as those which generally involve a determination of the rights, the duties, or obligations of specific individuals on the basis of the application of presently existing legal standards or policy considerations to past or present facts developed at a hearing conducted for the purpose of resolving the particular questions and interests. In simpler terms, a quasi-judicial case is one in which the council members are acting as judges rather than legislatures. The council is not making new laws, but rather applying existing laws to specific facts concerning one person or a small number of people rather than the entire city at a public hearing. With legislative action... With legislative action, a public hearing is frequently held at which anyone can comment on the merits of the proposed law. However, the legislatures on the city council may also receive evidence from other sources, including citizen input received in person, by phone, or by email, and may consider any evidence, any of that evidence, as well as their own personal beliefs and biases in deciding whether to adopt the legislation. But on occasion, however, when the city council is confronted with a quasi-judicial matter, it is required to operate as a panel of judges rather than as legislatures. In contrast to the legislative actions and quasi-judicial matters, all of the evidence that may be considered by council must be presented at the public hearing. This procedure is required in order to afford due process to those individuals who may be affected by the decision. So why judges can't discuss quasi-judicial matters? Just as a judge in a civil or criminal case cannot speak to one party without the other parties being present, the judges on city council are prohibited from obtaining evidence from either side of the dispute outside of the public hearing. This rule, referred to in legal terms as regulating ex parte communication, has been developed over the years to ensure that everyone with an interest in the case and all the members of the decision-making body hear the same evidence at the same time from the same sources. Ex parte communication includes not only oral communication, but written, electronic, and graphic communication as well. The rule prohibiting ex parte communication can be frustrating to citizens who assume that they always have access to their elected officials. However, it is important to remember that this rule is designed to protect the rights of all involved, the applicants, the accused, the accusers, and all of the interested parties, affording the opportunity for a fair hearing before unbiased decision-makers. If and when a council member does receive information about a case outside of a public hearing, the member is expected to disclose the communication in as much detail as possible to the entire council at the beginning of the public hearing. If the council member sincerely believes that the ex parte communication did not affect his or her ability to decide the case fairly, impartially, and based solely on the evidence presented at the hearing, the member can participate in the hearing after the disclosure. Otherwise, the member must recuse him or herself from the discussion and the vote. Quasi-judicial proceedings must be conducted in accordance with procedural due process and fundamental fairness, which is a cornerstone, again, of our due process system. Tempe voters last fall approved changes to the city charter that allowed a council supermajority to vote to remove its own members if there is clear and convincing evidence of unlawful conduct involving moral perpetuity, fraud, or corruption. The Arizona cases cited by Ms. Barnes all refer to a preponderance of evidence standard, not the clear and convincing standard voted into law by Tempe voters last fall and required in these proceedings. The preponderance of evidence standard employed by Ms. Barnes requires that the party with the burden show that the claim is more probably true than not. Clear and convincing evidence is a much more stringent and heavier burden for the city council to meet. So the cases cited by Mrs. Barnes aren't relevant and binding under these circumstances. Additionally, the cases cited by Mrs. Barnes demonstrate that when bodies are acting in a quasi-judicial manner, due process is required. Clearly, Councilman Granville was not afforded due process. In conclusion, we urge you to avoid compounding the problems of lack of evidence, lack of disclosure to Councilmember Granville, lack of due process, and to date an unfair and biased process, and allow Councilman Granville to remain on city council. Thank you.
And Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I also have a information, a packet of information for the city clerk as well as council. And thank you.
Mr. Granville, you have any more comments you'd like to make?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. With that, any other comments from the council? Anyone else? Yeah, you got any other questions? Any comments? Councilmember Keating?
Sorry, everybody. I didn't know I was going first, but here we are. Before, you know, I get into my little PowerPoint spiel, I just want to thank everybody who's come out tonight, who's been part of the process for or against, particularly the survivors. Your stories are incredibly powerful and I would hope that, if I'm lucky enough not to be a survivor, but I would hope that if I was, I would have the courage that you have shown. I'm not sure I would, to be truthful with you. So the fact that you came out here and spoke publicly and told us your stories is very impactful to me and I think it is the rest of the council as well. You know, obviously, the, what we've heard today from Ms. Barnes and what we've heard, what we've read in the reports that are all public information, by the way, I would encourage everyone here to request and read those documents and draw your own conclusions on those. You know, it is very troubling to me. And it's not a matter of, you know, we don't like Councilmember Granville. You know, I mean, that's just not true. I mean, I'm the guy who talked Maricopa County Democratic Party into letting him buy into their field campaign in 2012, a race he barely won. It was me who did that. I endorsed him in the last campaign. So the idea that this is a years-long witch hunt just isn't true. What is true is we have some pretty compelling evidence we've heard from members of the public and experts alike on this matter. And sorry, my voice is shaking a little bit. I'm a little nervous, a little upset. And there's something I want to just address before we go any further on this. And I'm going to qualify the statements I'm about to make in that I am not an expert in this field. So I'm just going to present what I find to be suspicious and ask you to make your own judgment on that. But, you know, I worked in web development for a number of years on the front end, not on the back end. So what we're going to talk about right now is some backend stuff. And I just want to make sure that this is in the record tonight before we go, before we proceed. Okay. On Friday, March 29th, 2019, Councilmember Granville received an email from one Devin James. And I blacked out his email address because he requested be done, you know, because he's a lot of people harassing him or whatever. And I think it'll become clear as I go on that I don't think that's a real possibility, but just in case that it is, I blacked out his email address. This email basically says, hey, man, never met you, don't know who you are, but over a year ago, I heard two women talking at a coffee shop. Now, I don't know if you've ever been in a coffee shop, but I worked in one, an E-Joy Cafe on Seventh and Mill, when I first moved here in 2003, back when internet cafes were a thing. So it was, it was a good job. Anyway, they're loud, okay? Their espresso machines are loud, the coffee machines are loud, there's people talking, and in this case, they were playing video games. Anyway, so the emailer alleges that he overheard these two women plotting what is essentially, excuse me, at the time, they were two teenage girls, plotting, you know, what is essentially a multi-person, multi-year criminal conspiracy against Councilmember Granville because one of them was a scorned lover. And you can read this. This is public record. It's in your packet, I believe. So this isn't anything that you can't verify on your own. There's a lot of suspicious things about this email, obviously. The timing, the fact that it comes from a domain address, mail.com, which I had never heard of. I did look into it. Mail.com is a German-based email company that does not require two-factor authentication. Essentially, that means anyone, you can't, you can't sign up for a Gmail account and not give them your phone number. You can't sign up for a Yahoo account and not give them your phone number. Mail.com doesn't require any sort of identifying information. Thus, we'll never know, even if the court subpoenaed these records, who set up this email address. One of the most suspicious, I mean, you can read it yourself. I'm not going to go point by point. One of the most suspicious things about this is at the end, and I have it highlighted and read there. I also looked up the girls on Facebook. The pictures match. Well, I find this very questionable because until Councilmember Granville's sister outed a victim today on the internet in one of the most petty and spiteful things I've ever witnessed, the women weren't, no one knew their names. So how would he know their names? When you have a conversation with somebody, do you repeat their first and last name? Do you sit there and say, Robin Aronado Savage, I'm Randy Keating. Are you having a good day today? We don't, that's not how people talk. And would they, would they do that while they were loudly discussing a criminal conspiracy in a public place? That doesn't make sense to me. So I'm not sure how he could have looked up their names over a year later, remembered their names. Did they spell their names? The victim's name that was, that was outed today is complicated. It's not Jane Smith and Jan Doe. It's a complicated name. And even if you heard it a hundred times, I still couldn't spell it. So that whole thing doesn't sit right with me. And again, I'm not claiming to be an expert. I'm not claiming anything other than I find this to be suspicious and think it should be considered. So I did a little bit more internet sleuthing. Uh, next slide, please. So the name is, the email address here is blacked out. Again, in case this email is really from this Devin James person, who, by the way, whether you registered the vote or not is public record. There is no Devin James registered to vote in the city of Tempe. There is no Devin James registered to vote in the state of Arizona. In the email, Mr. James claims to have gone to Councilmember Navarro's events and others. Now, city council, people who are engaged in the city council process typically are registered to vote, right? I mean, if you're paying attention to politics, you might not be voting. But if you're paying attention to city politics, you're definitely voting. So regardless of that, that doesn't prove anything, and I'm not claiming that it does. So you put in the email address in Google and zero matches come back. Those three things are just ads for fine people by email address, but there's zero matches. I would challenge any of you to put in your personal email address into Google, hit return, and if any of you come back with zero matches, I will buy you a beer and call you a child of God. Please go to the next slide. This, for example, is me. If you put my email address in Google, and you can see there's all kinds of responses that come back, there's ten pages of responses that come back. So that's that. Next slide, please. This is John Hoopenthall. John Hoopenthall was the superintendent of public instruction for the state of Arizona and he was using his office computer to basically troll liberal websites and liberal bloggers. And I had a blog back then, too, and he used to comment on mine. And I feel kind of special and, you know, famous that that happened, but this was a long time ago. Next slide, please. You know, he called people lazy pigs, went full birther. You know, this is all while he's supposed to be conducting the city's business. You know, excuse me, state's business, thank you. Next slide, please. Hoopenthall had the dignity and the respect for his office to resign once he was busted. But how was he busted? Next slide, please. What is an IP address? Now, again, I am not an expert in this field. I am just a guy who saw something I thought was suspicious and did some Googling, which anyone in this room could do. And you may find different results, you may not. These are the results I found. An IP address, according to Tech Terms, or simply IP, is a unique address that identifies a device on the internet or local network. It allows a system to be recognized by other systems connected via the Internet Protocol. Wikipedia says, "An Internet Protocol address, IP address, is a numerical label assigned to each device connected to a computer or a network that uses the Internet Protocol for communications. An IP address serves two principal functions: host and network interface identification and location addressing." How Stuff Works says, "Every machine on a network has a unique identifier. Just as you would address a letter in the mail, computers use the unique identifier to send data to specific computers on the network." What's myipaddress.com, which I would think is an authority? The IP part in IP address stands for Internet Protocol. The address part stands for the unique number that gets linked to all activity you do, somewhat like a return address on a letter you send out. Next slide, please. Can you share an IP address? I don't know. So I Google it. No. Two computers with the same IP address will cause issues. So I can have similar addresses, but not the same. Okay? I'm going to trust superuser.com as accurate there. Next slide, please. This is a header in an email. Every email you send has one of these, but they're taken out so that we don't have to scroll through pages and pages of gobbledygook to read the message. This is about a third of a header for one email. So there's a lot of information in there. One of the information snippets is sender IP address is number. Next slide, please. This is the conspiracy email sent to Kobe Granville on March 29th, 2019. Sender IP address, 205.139.110.61. Next slide. This is the conspiracy email sent to Jill Navarro on March 29th, 2019. Sender IP is 205.139.11.6, or 110.61. Next slide. This is the one example that I could find in my three years on council where he has sent me, and this is public record, where he has sent me an email to my Tempe account from his personal Gmail account. The IP address is 2.5.139.110.61. Now, again, I'm just presenting this as not an expert, but a guy who knows how to use Google. I would ask us here to apply Occam's razor. Simply put, Occam's razor is, the simplest answer is probably the most likely. Now, is this a multi-year conspiracy hatched in public with girls repeating their first and last name and possible spelling for an anonymous listener? Perfectly planned and orchestrated, so much so that they were able to fool Phoenix Police and everyone else? I mean, I'm not a cop, but the cops that I know know how to tell when someone's lying. So I just ask that this be included in the record. And if this vote tonight should not proceed or should not be successful, I'll be referring this matter to the city attorney for another possible code of conduct violation and an open meeting law violation. With that, Mayor?
No clapping. Please no clapping. Please, please no clapping. Councilmember Adams, and then, wait, wait, Councilmember Gran, wait. Yes, Councilmember Granville.
So I would just make the offer now, you can send an email from my laptop right now to yourself, from my cellphone, from any device you want. I don't know where the IP addresses come from. I am not as technical as you are. I'm not sure I could even do that if I wanted to. But I will make any device you've ever, you can pick the device. I am positive. But I, for what it's worth, man, there.
Councilmember Adams? Wait, do you want to respond?
I want to make a motion.
Wait, 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 you gotta, wait. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I just want to clarify some questions I have. And this would be to our city attorney on 418. I just want to clarify that this case, this situation is not being retroactively applied, correct? Can you speak to that? Because that's been brought up tonight. So I just want to have clarity on that.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Yes, I will refer you to a confidential memorandum that was previously provided to you all, including Councilmember Granville, by outside counsel Sarah Barnes. I will state, this is the first time that this matter has come before the city council for your consent. for your consideration in this context. Does that help answer your question?
Yes. Another question I have is, wouldn't the victims have to be willing to press charges for this, this police to go forward with charges? I mean, don't the victims have to be willing to press charges? It's not up to the police, is what my clarifying question is, is up to really the victims to say they are willing to press charges? Or is it up to the police? I just ask for clarity purposes.
Are you asking me?
Yes.
I don't know that I have the exact answer to that. My understanding from Detective Moes in this situation is that the reason, the lone reason they weren't pursuing it is because they didn't have these three women's cooperation to testify during the prosecution. That is my understanding.
Okay. So I've worked with many survivors over the years in my past careers, and most of them did not want to go forward with the legal process because of, they become re-victimized by society. And I guess one of the most troubling things I have about this case is it's she said, she said, she said versus he said. And that's, that's just really powerful to me. It's, it's not just one person, but it's three women, and then it sounds like there was 10, 10 others from Tempe Prep that had concerns that you had referenced earlier, Ms. Barnes. So then we're up to like 13 versus what Colby said.
Let me just clarify, the women's comments in the reviews, and they weren't all women's comments, there were women and men.
Okay.
I'm sorry, girls and boys, because they were students at the time. Comments were about what they believed to be inappropriate behavior, inappropriate conversations, favoritism towards some certain attractive young females, at least in their opinion, in the comments, and things that made them feel uncomfortable in the classroom with him. So there were numerous comments of that nature. None of those specifically suggested additional sexual assault allegations. They were, they were more limited than that. So I just want to make sure that that was clear. But there were numerous, numerous of them, and they were not just from women, there were men, too. Boys, too.
Thank you.
Robyn, you wanted to go?
Councilmember Aronando Savage.
Good intro. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, first and foremost, I just want to take a minute to thank everybody that's here in this room tonight. I can't tell you how much it means for the survivors that are here to actually share their stories and how courageous that is and how powerful that is. So thank you for taking the time to be here. It really does mean a lot. And I know this isn't easy for anybody. It's really difficult, I know, for the survivors, for the victims, for their families, for this council, and I think definitely for our community as a whole. But as a council member, I know it's my job to ensure the city and the council reflect the very best of Tempe. And elected officials, we sign up knowing that we'd be held to a higher standard. I believe that Colby's actions clearly violated the council code of conduct, the ethics in our workplace handbook, and has really discredited our city. There is serious concerns of a pattern of behavior that misuses a position of authority as a teacher, lawyer, and an elected official. As a mom, a sister, and a daughter, I am so disappointed. But as an elected official, I am proud of our council's thorough and fair investigation and the conclusions to come tonight. There is no place for this behavior, this misconduct on this council or in this city. We hold ourselves to a higher standard, and we will, we must continue to do so. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to address a refrain that I heard from a few people tonight and that I've heard out in the community, and that is that this is some kind of a taking out of Colby and some kind of a political hit job. As anyone who follows the council must know, Colby, you and I align on a lot of issues, way more issues than we disagree. You've been an ally in many of the issues I hold most dear, such as affordable housing, Tempe pre-K, you were champion of Tempe pre-K, our bike infrastructure, and other sustainability issues. In fact, you've been the swing vote on many of these issues that we both care deeply about. If this were just about politics, I'd want to keep you on the council despite clear and convincing evidence. But what I have now from the investigative report, and that is what I'm focused on, as much as I so appreciate all what I've heard tonight, I need to focus on the investigative report. And what I'm focused on are the disturbing details of sexual assault that make everything political irrelevant. This is about doing the right thing. And forgive me for going a little bit longer, but I feel the need to do this. A year ago, when a third woman added to the troubling allegations that were brought forward, I called for, called me to resign. I thought his continued service on the council was a cloud, on the council a distraction to all those issues we do care so deeply about, and it wasn't the best thing for our community or this governing body. The Phoenix PD began their investigations, and I was determined to examine without prejudice the evidence that they bring forward. The Phoenix Police Department did bring forward sufficient evidence providing alcohol to minors, assault and sexual assault charges, but they did not pursue because the women were unwilling to testify. So there was evidence, we've heard again on social media, we've heard tonight that there wasn't evidence, but there just wasn't evidence that could be used in court. They did not find evidence that there was no, they did not find that there was no evidence of a crime. The Phoenix detectives' opinion was that the council member chose these young women specifically because they'd be easy to manipulate due to their vulnerability, sexual identity struggles, and overall insecurities. Then we hired an outside investigator to conduct our code of conduct investigation. It wasn't another bite at the apple. We looked to the December 8 report and the documentation, and that's the documentation we are using today to weigh this heavy decision. So here's what we know. All those who interviewed these young women, whether it was TPA, Phoenix PD, our city investigator Sarah Barnes, found the survivors to be credible, they believed them, they mentioned corroborating emails and text messages that backed up the individual stories. They found Councilmember Granville to be deceptive and evasive. He remembers with clarity everything he feels helps him, but can't recall the details of the most serious allegations. The most serious information which Ms. Barnes got from an unredacted, and that's very important, police department report, because we hadn't seen that unredacted report, was a sexual assault allegation. Colby, sorry, Councilmember Granville claims he must not have done it because in the email sent to him the next day, she did not mention that him assaulting her and that she was super gay. Last week, a resident said that if the victims are not willing to testify, they must be lying and unable to perjure themselves, unwilling to perjure themselves. That's a very offensive and unfair charge against these women. It's well documented that survivors of sexual abuse may take years to report, if ever, and they often choose not to testify. Let's think about the context in which these young women made their decision not to prosecute. At the time they interviewed with Phoenix PD, Councilmember Granville had recently been fired by Tempe Prep. The media was reporting on the story, the social networks were ablaze, going crazy. Some were calling for Councilmember Granville's resignation. Councilmember Keating and I were, too, that also made that call. The backlash that we and others, and particularly Councilmember Randy Keating, got from Councilmember Granville's supporters was swift, and it was ugly. Name-calling and threats were common, and the defense usually turned to go attack the women making the charges. I can only imagine that these women watched these hateful public attacks and displays and had to consider just how much more abuse they would need to endure should their names become public. Excuse me. It was in this context that these women, described as young and vulnerable, were asked if they would like to go public and submit their frightening and unpredictable world to the criminal justice system in our county. I refuse to judge them for their decisions not to testify. That is their right. And who could blame them? It may well be that this is the healthiest expression of self-care that they could have made. And we have seen these attacks on the survivors, we've seen it continue. At last week's meeting, I'm so sad to say that a resident even demanded that we investigate these young women and their families. Now, people have been asked if this is, it's unfair to be used retroactively. All those, these disturbing allegations broke in the media a little over a year ago, there wasn't much detail. The police investigation was triggered, and though we were given a copy of the police report, it was heavily redacted. We triggered, it triggered our code conduct investigation, and that process played out several months where we were given no information. The council only learned of the details, the evidence, and Councilmember Granville's response, it was over a number of weeks and a month, until we were presented by outside counsel in executive session just over two months ago. The report and interview showed us the first evidence, real, clear, and convincing evidence of sexual assault, not hands down the pants, which I confess I heard and thought, that's horrible, that's awful, it's assault. But when I heard the rape, the rape information, what appeared to be the rape information, I knew it could not be ignored. This detailed information, to me, was a game changer. We did not look for this code of conduct issue. These disturbing allegations came to us, and we're not the only organization or governing body that has had to deal with these credible allegations. Tempe Prep investigated, and they fired Councilmember Granville. The state bar, an eight to, eight to zero vote, and how often do, do eight lawyers agree on anything? They brought forth their internal charges, and the State Board of Education has yet to make the decision. We have this report, we have the associated documents. The information contained therein is clear and convincing and is substantially more probable to than not. Let's see, one more thing. Voters decided overwhelmingly by 79% of the vote in November that they want us to take action when faced with a council member who is engaged in unlawful conduct. A heavy decision weighs upon this council tonight. I have been, I sympathize with what you're saying, Jody, because I felt sick to my stomach all day, I feel like there's this weight on my shoulders. We are so well aware of our duties and responsibilities to those writing us and saying we're doing this in a flip away, I can say that you're wrong. This has been a torturous process and a horrible time for the council to be dealing with allegation against our colleague. So ultimately, each of us must decide two things. Do we believe the allegations made against Councilmember Granville? I believe he gave alcohol to minors, and that is a crime of moral perpetude as defined by Arizona case law. I believe he assaulted one woman and sexually assaulted the other, unlawful conduct. I believe the women. Do I believe that this behavior warrants removal under city charter? I do. Councilmember Granville has lost the trust of our community and the trust of this body, and I will support removal from office. Thank you.[1370.51][1370.51](Applause).
Please no clapping. In, in the testimony given by Councilman Granville, he admits to most of the allegations, basically everything up to the illegal activity. To me, this coupled with the Phoenix detective Moes' opinion, I believe that the allegations are substantially more likely to be true than not true. And as has been stated tonight and in a report from Ms. Sarah Barnes, I feel that the allegations have violated in the code of conduct of the city council with clear and convincing evidence when the facts are presented. Councilmember Adams?
I concur with what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, and believe that, I believe the victims in this case, and their stories are very consistent, and I will be supporting removing Councilman Granville from office.[1431.41][1431.41](Applause).
I need to read something. The city council has heard and considered the following evidence. Investigation report performed by Sarah L. Barnes dated December 6, 2018.
Excuse me, Mayor. Councilmember Navarro's on the phone, I don't know if he would like to make this statement.
That's all right.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Are you there, Mayor? Yeah, thank you. No, I, I think, you know, a lot has been said tonight, and obviously, I want to thank everyone that has come out and shared their stories, shared their concerns. But we're looking at the facts that are before us and the information that was provided to us. And it, it's been said, it just rises to the level of extreme concern, to the point where obviously, this is nothing we want to go through, no one wants to go through. No one wants to go through any public prosecution. I can now even understand, you know, any victim not wanting to go through the prosecution because this would be a heavy, you know, media event, in my opinion. And that's just, you know, something that, that obviously would, would deter someone from even trying to go down that road. But with what's presented with us today, I mean, it's, it's heartbreaking, and it has those, those concerns of what is the character of the council? What conduct does the council need to hold? And we are held to a higher standard, in my opinion. We are in the public eye day in, day out. And even as a firefighter, you know, I'm in the public eye, and we're held to higher standards. And I, even in the business I am, things and people, you know, things like these happen, and I personally have, have seen that. And the bottom line is, when it affects the character of, I'll say, a department or anything, corporate office or corporation of any sort, if it, if it gets to a level to where it is not characteristic of that employee or representing that department or that city or what may it be, it doesn't even matter if there is a legal charge or not. It's, it's within our bylaws, it's within our guidance that we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard. And the city council is no different. And I wish we didn't have to go through this, I wish we didn't have to go through the whole process, to be honest with you. But we do, and I'll be voting for the removal of Councilmember Granville.[1617.51][1617.51](Applause).
I have to read a couple statements here. As a reminder, pursuant to the Tempe City Charter, Section 2.06D, the city council may remove a council member by affirmative vote of five of seven council members with the due process and clear and convincing evidence for unlawful conduct involving moral perpetude, fraud, or corruption. The city council has heard and considered the following evidence. Investigation report performed by Sarah L. Barnes dated December 6, 2018. The transcript of the interview of Councilmember Granville by Sarah L. Barnes dated January 24, 2019. Councilmember Granville's response to Sarah Barnes dated December 27, 2018. Response to Councilmember Granville's document by Sarah L. Barnes dated February 15, 2019. Resolution Number 2018.142, the Tempe City Council Code of Conduct. The City of Phoenix Incident Report, Number 2018-00000488893. Clear and convincing evidence standard, Raja, S.I. 3, the Fifth, E.D., and testimony and evidence presented at the city count, at the city special meeting on April 12, 2019. I look to my colleagues, is there a motion to adopt the resolution with the evidence that I read into the record to remove Councilmember Granville from the city council effective immediately? Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just want to say, you know, I take no pleasure or joy in any of this. This has been a very ugly and divisive and damaging ordeal for our city, and I hope after tonight, we can begin the healing process and get back to the city's business. With that, Mayor, I move we remove Councilmember Granville from office per the resolution.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion carries six to zero with Councilmember Granville abstaining. Next, I'm going to be calling a special city council meeting to be held on Monday, April 15, 2019, at 4:00 PM to discuss the process of filling the vacant council seat and appointment of a qualified person pursuant to the Tempe City Charter, Section 2.06C1. With that, we are adjourned.[1785.01][1785.01](Applause).